All right, I'm going to call this Willetts City Council meeting to order on May 22 at 6:30 PM. And if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with a roll call, please. Councilmember Connie Strong, Stransky, Gonzalez, Mayor Rodriguez. Present. All right, our next order of business is public communication. The city council welcomes input from the audience. Is there anyone that would like to address us on an item that is not on the agenda? And if so, could you please step up to the podium here and state your name? All right, sounds like we have nothing for public communication, so I'll move along. Next order of business, public matters. We have an update from our third district supervisor who is not yet here, so I'll move that item and should he arrive later. City manager and I met with him last week on Thursday, and he was going to bring a county update to you. We also have an update from Little Lake Fire District. There's a written report in the agenda packet. As you can see, the fire department has been very busy, and we thank each of them for their hard work, especially knowing that we have a volunteer fire department. Special thanks to them. No fire chief here today, okay. We have no enactment of ordinances before us. On the consent calendar, we have one item, the May 8th, 2024 minutes.
Actually, called Dolores already, but there were a couple of corrections on the dates on my report of some of the groups that I've met with. I don't know whether I was looking at the wrong month on the calendar or what, but anyway, she has the correct dates now to put in the minutes, so I will move approval with those minor corrections.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and I'll open it up. Is there anybody from the public that wants to address us on the minutes? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie Strong, Stransky, Gonzalez, Mayor Rodriguez. Yes. All right, motion carries, 5-0. Moving on to our monthly activity reports. We have the building activity report for April 2024 in your packet. We also have the business license activity report for April 2024. Is there anything noteworthy that you want to bring forward on that one, or just acknowledgement that they're in there? I'm going to assume that's acknowledgement. All right, then we'll move on to commissions, agencies, and authorities. We have none before us, and then I'll turn it over to City Manager Brian Bender.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. The first item on the agenda for your attention is a resolution in support of a grant application that the Art Center for Willetts is pursuing through state parks. Basically, it's a grant opportunity that would fund program development of various promotion of arts, art-related events, public engagement, community engagement, with the focus being at municipal parks. And the Art Center doesn't operate parks, whereas the city does. So this is an opportunity for the council to acknowledge their support of the Art Center and all the programs they're doing, and their proposed programs that would be potentially funded through this financial assistance, and also in acknowledgement that in time, there may be, if they, hopefully, they receive the award, that there'll be a couple items that may come back before the council for approval to utilize the various parks. Once again, this is a request that has been submitted. City staff is not actively involved. We are on the peripheral of this request. The Art Center is doing all the heavy lifting and putting together the application. They have met with city staff, they have met with myself, and we have composed a resolution of support, that is, before you tonight. And I believe Gary Wharton is present, if you have any comments.
No, no comments at all. Just hope that you say yes.
Okay. Well, we've had an opportunity to read it. I can say for one that I'm very pleased that the Art Center is offering so many, or is adding more things to their offerings here in Willetts.
I'm in support, other than I had a quick question. Who is the grantee? Would it be the Art Center?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not the main entity. We're just a letter of support. Basically, as I alluded to earlier, this is a grant that is trying to promote artistic endeavors within municipal parks. They're the ones with the ability to engage artists and other entities. We have the parks. So the marriage of the two.
And they would do the grant reporting then?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to support the resolution for the Art Center's application.
I will second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak to us on this matter? All right, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie Strong, Stransky, Gonzalez, Mayor Rodriguez. Yes, motion carries, 5-0, and we're very grateful, all the hard work by the volunteers at the Art Center.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of good things have been happening over there. It's good to see. Next item is yours as well.
Yes, so transitioning from, oh, there's our third district supervisor. Do you want to allow him?
No, we'll come back.
Okay. Transitioning from the Art Center of Willetts and their activities and efforts to promote art in this community to an administration item. So this is a request that is being presented to the council. It has been reviewed and supported by our labor attorneys, as well as Mr. Lance here. This is a request to have the council delegate your authority and bestow it onto a city manager to review and render decisions regarding employees' requests for CalPERS disability consideration. CalPERS has very specific provisions on how disability requests are reviewed, considered, and finally issued. This is an item that during the discussions with our attorneys, most communities have delegated this back to the city manager. There's a lot of good reasons for that. One of the biggest reasons is if an item, if an item has to come before the city council, it's going to be at this public setting. And there will be discussion of certain items relating to personnel matters that we do not want to expose and should not expose. So delegating that authority to the city manager, that level of discussion can happen within closed doors.
Any clarifying questions?
Yes. So essentially, a decision to transfer this authority to you or future city managers would essentially protect employees from having public discussions of personnel matters?
Yes.
Okay.
And as well as removing council members from that equation, you may not be fully aware of all the personnel items that, or the items that are associated with that request or case, and it just, you would just make it more difficult for everyone involved.
I was under the understanding we already had done this, or prior councils had already done, or is this something that has to be re-upped every so often?
To our knowledge, we couldn't find a copy.
Oh, okay.
I spoke with Karen Stevenson about that. I guess about five years ago, there was a situation where the council had to take some action, because we had not delegated the authority to the manager.
Oh, okay.
And so we're trying to avoid that situation.
So yes, that's another item related to this topic. It has only been invoked essentially once in recent memory.
And Jim, could I ask, is this the norm with other cities?
I discussed this with Libra Cassidy, Whitmore, our personnel attorneys, our labor attorneys, and they say it's very common, it's more common to not to do this. Also, I was looking at the Brown Act closed session rules today, because I wondered whether the city council would be in closed session to discuss a personnel disability issue like this. And there's not a specific provision in the Brown Act that applies to disability findings. It's appropriate for a city council to be in closed session concerning the employment and the discipline and the termination of an employee, but not really, there's no specific authority to meet for purposes of adjudicating whether a disability exists.
And that's not, so it wouldn't be the norm to have some kind of impartial outside person participate in the process. It's normally...
Yeah, the code says that the city council shall make this determination, and what it is, is you would have to determine, does this employee have a disability condition based upon medical reports that you would be reviewing? And if you determine that no, no, a disability does not exist, then the employee has a right to have a contested hearing on the issue and go forward. But the code specifically says that the city council may delegate that authority to the manager or some other employee, a staff person within the city.
And so, Jim, so under the circumstance, let's say the city manager says, I don't think so, the employee would still have the ability to contest that?
Yes.
Okay.
What would happen in the event that the city manager is the one that had the need? I'm just asking.
Well, that's an interesting question. I would think that delegation would, I think we would make a, there would be a motion brought to delegate to the vice mayor of the authority.
Vice mayor, you mean the...
The vice man, excuse me, the assistant manager.
Assistant manager.
So does that need to be added into the language of the code, or not unless it becomes an issue?
I think it could be, we could phrase this, that authority is delegated to the city manager or his or her designee.
And in that type of situation, you will probably receive, or the organization would receive guidance and counseling from our labor attorneys, as well as Mr. Lance, on how to proceed and nominate a designee in that case, too.
Okay. I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public that want to address us on this item? This is a very quiet group this evening. Okay.
I'll move approval of the delegation of the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion?
Is that with the designee provision?
Yeah.
As amended. As amended. Any of you?
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second, and I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie Strong, Stransky, Gonzalez, Mayor Rodriguez. Yes, motion carries, 5-0, and back to verbal reports.
Okay, thank you. Briefly, I know I've been keeping the council in the loop regarding the master tax sharing agreement. It took another twist over the last couple weeks. The expectation that it was ready to go to the board supervisors at their meeting yesterday, the 21st of May. There was a comment that was made, or some concerns that was raised by internal county staff on the actual applying the different formulas for when district, or when properties transition out of one jurisdiction's taxing formula to another. So there was a lot of discussion back and forth last week and the week earlier between the members of the ADAC Committee, county staff, council that was involved, as well as the municipalities. At this stage, at this time, everything has been agreed upon, all the kinks and the concerns that were raised by the county staff has been addressed. It's tentatively to be on the schedule with the board supervisors, June 4th. And John, you're looking at me with an acquisitive look.
No.
Okay. Did I speak out of turn, or?
No, you know more than I do.
Oh, okay. That was not my intent, John, so. It looks promising. The major provisions have not changed. And once again, the current agreement as it stands, it does benefit the city of Willetts. It does provide additional protection for Ukiah and Fort Bragg because of the way their communities were developed and, or lack of annexation occurred when properties would develop within the, outside the immediate boundaries, but receive services. But for the city of Willetts, it does help us, especially as we embark on the general plan amendment with the land use component, as well as sphere of influence. It does check a big box with LAFCO, so it does serve a purpose. If the board of supervisors sign off on it on June 4th, then it will start the routing process between the cities. It may go to Ukiah first, it may come to us. Fort Bragg will probably not act on it until sometime in July, Port Arena, maybe August. So, but we are, the timeframe or the sequencing is to have the county sign off on it, and then the four municipalities. So, and one other item, any questions on the tax sharing agreement?
No.
Okay. One other item, and I just checked, and I apologize, I got a text message from PG&E. There was some questions from council members. We talked about it at a previous meeting about the planned power outage. I followed up with Allison Talbert, the municipality liaison officer for PG&E, and she just got back to me saying that they will have release of information later this week on the pending schedule. They're still formulating, formulating all their notices and timetables. So we'll get that message out, as well as PG&E. I don't know exactly when, okay?
But there will be an outage, that you haven't kind of pinned down?
Yes. Yes. Do you have a question? No, okay. One other item, I don't know if Walter was going to bring it up, I just want to acknowledge our services and facilities and utilities crews. Next week is Public Works Appreciation Week, and just want to put that out there for all our dedicated employees on that side of the organization. We cannot operate the city without their dedication and hard work and long hours and sometimes miserable conditions, so thank you. That's what I have.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the department recommendations. Oh, that's right. John, would you like to, so we're going to go back to item 3A. 3A, and here from our district, third district supervisor.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Appreciate it. This was one night that I couldn't get here on time. They're doing major roadwork down at Walker Road, and so I got held up there for 15 minutes. So anyways, sorry about being late. So first of all, the library, the latest update is they've got the contract for this energy consulting firm. They just have to finalize it, and then that's the first project they're going to work on. There's the roof of the library, and it should be done this summer, and then they'll be working on the solar panels to put on top. Okay? I was just at the Measure B meeting today, and the PUF unit, the psychiatric hospital facility that they're building down on Whitmore Lane in Ukiah, the south end of Ukiah, that that's gone out to an RFP, and so it's, the deadline is June 27th, and then after that, they plan to break ground on that project in early August, and it should take about 14 months to build. So that's all from the Measure B money. Okay? You know, the budget is, we're working on trying to get this balanced budget, and that will be on June 4th and 5th, so, along with the tax sharing agreement. You know, I appreciate the city manager's willingness to meet with me. I wanted to discuss the issues, but then, since it got pulled off, it never even got published, the tax sharing agreement, I still don't even know what it is, because of the Brown Act, we have a couple supervisors working on it, so other people aren't privy to that information yet, so. But we will have that meeting before it comes before the board. And, you know, the board yesterday approved this special assessment ballot that will go out to the people on Sherwood Road, and it's to create, or maintain and create, you know, equal, or a space for, you know, fire trucks and everything on the emergency access routes of Willetts Creek Trail that comes out on Mill Creek, and also the Furco Road. And so really, it will go out the ballot, and people will have until July 23rd to vote. The assessment will be $30.88 for developed property per year, or if it's undeveloped property, it will be $1.39. And that's really to just provide two safe access routes for people, because, you know, in the Oak Fire of 2020, that the fire trucks came up the Furco Road because it had just been cleared, and they came up that way, and everyone could go out on both lanes of the Sherwood Road. So, anyway, if people ask, I'll be up in Brook Trails on Tuesday, the 28th, and we're going to do a presentation with the engineer who did the report, and the team from the county, and myself, to explain to the people up there exactly what's happening. And that will be a simple vote, and people who, people who have developed parcels will get a weighted vote versus the people who have undeveloped. And so we'll take all of that, we'll tabulate it on the 23rd, and if it's a majority vote, then they'll be assessed on next year.
I have a question. Is it, are they voting by mail, or it's not a regular election period?
No, but they can vote by mail, they can turn it in at the Willetts, I mean, the Brook Trails office. You know, we'll have a mailbox there, and they can turn it in to the county.
And they have to have a certain percent of all of them responding to make it a ballot?
No. No, it's just, you need a majority of the people who respond. So, right? The museum, the board gave approval for the museum to start working on having the friends of the museum or that entity make those decisions about if they need to do changes to the museum so that they can, you know, earn more money, or, you know, make efficiencies for, you know, like utilities, or insurance, or whatever, to cut down their cost. So the board gave approval that they could go ahead and start, you know, they would have that authority. So that's a big step forward for this transition. Okay? And then the Great Redwood Trail, and the mass, the draft master plan is on the internet, and you can go to greatredwoodtrailplan.org, and public comments close on June 3rd, and so we're still looking for comments on this plan. It's about 600 pages long. Okay? And the programmatic EIR, the deadline is May 31st, and that's dealing with the scope of the project. So there's a lot of things going on. So I just wanted you to be aware of that, because we're part of the Great Redwood Trail, and, okay?
Thank you. When we had talked previously, and I don't know if you can elaborate, do you know anything more about how, is there anything planned in our area for Measure, for the mental health? We talked a little bit about the potential for something behind Babcock Park.
Yeah, right now...
Is there anything official that you can talk about, that you know?
With Measure B.
With Measure B that could be connected or planned for that area?
No, just the, there's no facility or anything being planned. You know, the services, like the mobile outreach program that, you know, a mental health worker goes along with a sheriff deputy, then that is happening in this area.
Okay.
And some of the other programs, but no facilities.
Did Measure, has Measure B had any conversations about any enhancement of services in, in the northern part of the county? Has there been any discussion, or is everything staying centralized in kind of the Ukiah area, or maybe Ukiah and coast?
No, we're certainly trying to get those up here, and that would be a great comment for the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, because they're the ones who are coming up with the ideas, and then they kind of get, you know, approved at that level at the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and then they go to Measure B. Measure B might take it and recommend it to the board supervisors.
Gotcha.
So really, but we need those kind of comments to make sure that we're represented.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I've heard comments from lots of different people on, on whether they want more, or they want, they don't want more. I was just curious as to what might already be in the works with Measure B funding in our area, so.
But the discussion today, which goes back to a previous decision that the board of supervisors made, was that, you know, we had to borrow $7 million from Measure B to, to pay for the projected cost of behavioral health wing of the jail, you know, that's being constructed. And so right now, with the state pulling back some of their funds, and there's supposed to be a $9.3 million grant to, for the PUF construction, and that they're pulling it back, and they're saying, well, it might be a couple years delayed. So the money's all up in the air, and they're, they're not willing to go. Measure B isn't going forward with any new plans at this point.
And so did the Measure B committee approve the, the moving of the $7 million to, to support the jail? Is that something that was, that was recommended by the Measure B committee? Or was it only at the county level, at the supervisors level?
Yeah, they didn't really discuss it at Measure, I mean, there was a little bit, but they never took any official action on it. But the board of supervisors did.
Okay, I was just curious, because, you know, sometimes we have advisory boards, but then sometimes we don't listen to the advisory boards, and so I was just curious whether or not supervisors allowed the advisory board to really weigh in on that matter.
Yeah.
Sounds like maybe not so much.
Not so much in that case.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
I have a good question. You mentioned the mobile outreach going out with sheriff's deputies. I would assume that's in unincorporated areas.
Right.
Has there been any discussion of including some of those workers to go out with Willetts PD for mental health issues within our city limits?
I haven't been part of those discussions, but you can certainly, I mean, I'll bring it up at the next Measure B meeting.
Sure, if there's something the county could do to help our officers with mental health incidents, I think it would be appreciated.
And I'll take it to the, you know, Dr. Jenny Miller, who's the head of Behavioral Health.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to see if anybody has any clarifying questions for you. Is there anybody from the public that has a clarifying question or comment on supervisors' presentation? Nope, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, moving on. Let's see. Yep. I'm going to turn it over to Dolores Peterson for the adoption of a resolution amending the city of Willetts Conflict of Interest Code and rescind Resolution 2008-06.
This is to update the FPPC with our current position names. We haven't had the update done since 2008, and we need to do that so that they know who's filing the Form 700s through city employees.
Connie, go ahead.
Well, I had a question, just, there were quite a few city positions that were being taken off of the list, but it looked to me like there were, there are potential circumstances in which they might have a conflict of interest, so I was wondering what the rationale was for...
Well, the update was because we have positions that are no longer on, no longer there.
Oh, okay.
So they've been replaced with a different title, and that's what's being updated with the FPPC.
Yeah, so, yeah. So you aren't actually reducing the...
No.
The kinds of issues that might come up for conflict.
We're just changing the name.
Okay.
Essentially, this is matching with the current job description and titles, that what you're seeing is we're trying to put away from 2008.
Yes, that's, that sounds very reasonable. Thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Anybody from the public? Nope. All right, we can back up here for our motion.
I'd like to move staff recommendations.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie Strong, Stransky, Gonzalez, Mayor Rodriguez. Yes. Dolores, is it possible that it could be put this way back to the city road? I was just going to ask that.
Thank you. Oh, Miss William.
All right. All right, Walter Cohen, our services and director of facility, will be addressing the...
be addressing the next item, 9B. I'll let you introduce it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. This is a contract, a contract amendment to the Laco on-call engineering contract. We're into a three-year period where we had several on-call engineers. Right now, Laco has 12 task orders and they've been helping immensely with all the projects we've had. We are over right now, their $400,000 contract is right now at $565,685. So we have an overage of 165,585 and then we need an additional 34,315 to clear, to get done with these projects at the end of their contract in August. Most of this has been offset by savings we had from staff that we no longer have in place. And that's, we figured that out, that it was about $184,000 offset of staff that we haven't currently had in the last year and a half or two. And so part of this 16 extra thousand of that is going to come from our enterprise front balances. So we're asking for an extra $200,000 to catch up on the current invoices we have with Laco and then get through until August to finish up all these projects.
Go ahead.
So, thank you, Walter. City manager and I spoke about this item this afternoon. I was a little concerned that the request for amendment was coming to us after the monies had been spent instead of before and saying, hey, we look like we're going to have an overrun. We'd like to request this additional funding. I understand that the reason this happened is because of staff turnover. There are actually a number of issues that led to this and that new policies have been put into place to prevent this from happening in the future. So I just would like to say that I understand this is a one-time thing and that in the future, we'll look forward to having amendments brought to us before the expenses thing.
Going forward, we're going to, we're going to be changing up the formatting, how we do this and present this. So yes, there will be changes. So that does not happen again. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Yeah, we had talked about this as well at the Transportation Committee, a little bit even at the Finance Committee about concerns about overruns and a need to change policy. And I was happy to hear that there will be some policy changes.
Yes.
I would just like to know a little bit about the timeline that we could expect policy changes so that we're not looking at this six months in.
We're actually in the process of doing that right now before there, all the contracts end in August. And we'll be working that out next couple of months and presenting that and how we're going to change this up and everything with our engineering services and the outside on-call. Yes.
So once again, if you recall, three years ago, staff presented a concept where we would have a rotational basis of on-call with a designated city engineer. I'm not saying that was the root of the cause, but it greased a slope for our descent into the amendment request. The goal with the staff now is to have one on-call and one city engineer so we could track it. Also important was we were trans, we didn't have, a little bit, we didn't have a finance department trying to get that in place. Internally, we weren't doing a greatest job in following with task orders. And once we started digging into this and recognizing and piecing it all together, we realized we had a multiple task orders that weren't properly financed. Now with Manny in charge of financial components as well as Springbrook, Springbrook has been configured to track funds. Manny's working with Walter. We are going to delineate projects far different than we did in the past and also how they're programmed on the financial side. So that, we missed all that previously. Yes, it was a miss. But the other thing was, we, this doesn't help it, but we also, as was noted, the staffing turnover and the, being short-staffed, there was a commitment to keep the projects moving forward. And that's, without the staff, we had to rely on some of the on-calls and that's what inflated it as well. So once we change how we utilize an on-call, utilize our staff, use Manny's talents and devise the check and balances in Springbrook, these are the controls that we're talking about now.
And can you clarify what portion, Manny can clarify what portion went to which accounts? So is the $200,000, that all going to general fund or is a portion of that, have you delineated where it's, where it's all coming from?
Depending on the project. It'll go either to the general fund or water or sewer funds.
But have you identified?
Yeah, we're currently working on identifying exactly where it's landing at now because the projects change based off of what is necessary at any given point in time. But for the most part, they land over in those three subsets.
So this is really about paying the $200,000 even though we don't know whether it's coming out of water sewer or general fund?
For the most part, most of them are out of water and sewer.
Sewer, correct.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a little bit of it that has to do with, I think, I can't remember what-
There's some, there is some general fund support that is related to projects that are outside the enterprise component. But Laco and their expertise in working with services and facility, majority of it is enterprise funds related, water, wastewater collection, distribution.
Okay. Anybody else?
So was this a situation where Laco basically, for lack of a better word, gave orders to do work on our behalf that we weren't tracking? Is that the deal? Or where, where, where did the ball get dropped? Was it on us completely or was this a little bit-
It was on us. It was internal.
Yeah. Through the transition period, like Brian said, the projects kept on going on. They weren't directing them. Staff was directing as best as possible. But like I said, there's 12 task orders just for their firm alone. They're doing quite a bit of bulk of work for us right now. And like I said, that'll be ending in August. But they just, we just kept on going on the projects to, so that we didn't lose momentum on them and everything. They were being tracked, but financially, there was a, there was a, you know, we weren't coordinating well and stuff. Now with Springbrook, it's going to be a lot more able to track some of those costs and everything and not let them get away. Yes.
So for budget purposes, going forward, when we have projects, it'll, it'll basically, say you're approaching the time-
Oh, yeah. We're going to be tracking it much more carefully and stuff with the staff we now have and seeing how we're going to change up the whole sort of structure going into, after August when these contracts end and bring it back in a little bit more so that we have more control on both tracking and funds. And I suspect we're going to save quite a bit financially. So we're also going to be coming back and trying to fill a couple of those positions so that we can bring some of that back in-house and everything and not spending so much outside costs.
For the public, would you mind if you're able to, to just talk, you were talking about 12, 12 orders that were out there. Can you talk about the type of work that was impacted by this? What kind of engineering work was, took place that related to the-
A lot of it has been the city engineers, the oversight of all the other firms. There's quite a bit of that. Our engineer, Chad Mosher, has been assigned to the city. We have a water modeling task order. We have steel water line replacement. We have several road projects that they've been helping oversee. There's a sort of variety of oversight that they've been doing. There's a wastewater treatment maintenance building that's going to be coming to bid shortly. A lot of these projects have been the last two years been in development and we're going to be coming out with several of them this very soon and everything actually going out to bid. There's been a lot of pre-development engineering that was involved in that, that they've been overseeing. There's a steel water tank that's coming out too, that at the waste treatment plant. So there's several projects that have been in development the last two years they've been working on.
So knowing that, that these are the types of projects and there's still a lot that's moving forward.
Yes.
How, I hear that we're going to be able to track it, but I'm worried that we're still going to end up becoming over budget very quickly in our next fiscal year. And again, how soon are we going to see some kind of policy in place? I know you can track it, but how are we going to manage it?
We're going to be managing it much more in-house now. We're getting, you know, my position is filled. We're looking at filling some of the other positions in our department. We're going to be handling a lot more management on the city side and looking at the budgets much closer. And I think we're going to have a lot more oversight on our end and saving money. We're going to be putting these in place next couple of months before the contracts end in August.
So when Laco is doing whatever for us, is, is it being, I guess I worry that if for some reason there's a change in personnel on our end, do they submit something that says, hey, we're doing steel water main and that should have a number to it?
Oh, yes.
Which would go then to Manny that then would-
It's very detailed. Our invoices are detailed by the hour for every project and tracked. Yes, we have, we have documentation of all of that.
You'd be getting an update, let's say, a year from now, if there's another project, you'll be getting, would you generate this monthly and say, this is what's happening?
Yes. Yes. We get very detailed reports from them with all the hours, what staff, what project.
Internally, financially. So like if they send, if they send a work, whatever, to the city and it gets routed to Manny and then you're, you'd be able to tell Walter, hey, you're, you're approaching going over budget on that project. Would you be in that, is this what you're looking at doing?
Yes. So the main Springbrook suite actually has a project management module inside it. So you can actually put in the exact type of project that it is, where it lands in the budget, the, a budget for it so that it'll track when you're starting to reach the budget max for that particular project in general and then we'll know.
And we're currently paying for that aspect of the system, right?
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's, that's just a part of the basic system.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other clarifying questions?
Not really a question. I just want to say that I appreciate that we're going to have more in-house control because I think, as you said, that might enable us to save money along the way that when we can do it with our own staff, when we can do the tasks and certainly the management of the tasks that we're outsourcing, that gives me more confidence that we're, we're in the driver's seat and that we can keep the costs under control. So, thank you.
I think by the end of the year, we'll see considerable savings and just more control over the projects themselves from within. Yes.
One last question. Is any of it reimbursable through any of the grants that some of the work is currently being performed on their behalf?
We can look into that and see. I don't know for sure and stuff. We can look into that.
Manny, will you follow up on that? Okay, I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody who wants to address this on this item? Nope. I'll bring it back up to council and entertain a motion. If anybody would like to still move.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries by zero. We're moving on to item 9B and I'll turn that back over to Walter as well.
Nope.
Nope. Oopsie. Sorry. He's like, wait a minute.
I've been having a-
Yeah. Sorry. On 9C and I'll turn that one over to Dusty.
And we have Mr. Cruz as a consultant who's working on the element.
Would you like me to introduce it or you want to introduce it?
Either way, but I have the PowerPoint, so.
Sometimes I've heard I steal your thunder by introducing it, so.
That didn't come from me. Dolores, can you help me load the-
I like the idea of having Walter present this, though.
Oh, really? Okay.
And this would actually be an example where Laco is assisting us with this project under that contract and it is, their time is reimbursed. Just a tie. We'll segue between the two. Thank you.
Wrong one.
That's the wrong slideshow.
We're doing the rehab. The housing rehab.
That's good to know that Lonnie, they've got your slideshow too.
Yeah, we just saw Lonnie's thunder come.
All right, the floor is yours, Dave. It's all yours.
Thank you. Okay, okay. Good evening, mayor, council members. Dusty Dooly, I'm the community development director.
Talk a little louder.
Okay. So very, very grateful to be presenting this item to you tonight. What we have in front of you is a proposed City of Willetts owner occupied housing rehabilitation revolving loan program. You have quite a bit of information in your packet tonight. That is very much the fault of Sandy O'Farrell with Laco. She was instrumental in helping, assisting the city with developing the program guidelines and all the attachments that you have in front of you tonight. So just very quickly, you have an agenda summary, you have the resolution, you have the loan program application, you have a program handout that aims at attempting to explain the role of the property owner versus city staff throughout the relationship. You have the annual household income definition. You have the loan servicing policies and procedures. Thank you, Jeff Lucas. And you also have an application to be on the list, to be an approved contractor to participate in the program. And I'll speak a little bit to that in a second. So yeah, we'll give you a little bit of the purpose of today's presentation, some background, proposed timeline, and then focus in on some of the key divisions of the program. Again, lots of information for council's consideration here tonight. So maybe it's appropriate to start here. So this is a little bit of background referencing the latest housing element, adoption, update adoption that happened back in 2019. And it might have not been, you know, big news to everybody at the time. It wasn't something that I was fully aware of. But, but a key fact that came out of that exercise is the age of our housing stock here in the City of Willetts. And so what this slide is showing you that 88% of the existing housing stock as of 2019 was over 30 years in age. And then 31% of that housing stock was over 70 years in age. And so what that let us know is that, okay, we have an old housing stock and understandably, we developed a goal, a priority to develop a program such as the one we're presenting to you tonight. So some additional background, we had identified the goal and then magically we identified a funding source to support that goal. And council previously authorized staff to make use of this Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD, their permanent local housing allocation funds to support this program. And what you allowed us to do was make use of the years 2019 through 2023. What you see there on the screen totaling, you know, about $553,000 is the money that's available to the City of Willetts through those, through those funding years. And so this will be the initial money that we're going to be used to kick off this revolving loan program. I do also want to note that, you know, this money is on the books. The reason that it varies is because it's based on real estate transaction fees. And depending on what the number of transaction year is going to dictate how much money is allocated to, available to the City of Willetts through this funding source.
To clarify, you're saying that we've amassed that amount of money over those years that we haven't been spending yet?
Correct. We've gone ahead and requested the funding for 2019 and with, with council approval of the guidelines tonight, we'll go ahead and request the additional allocation of funds as well. So we do have the $92,000 in hand currently and we can get at the rest of the money in anticipation and meet the timeline, which I'll show you in a second for starting to get those loans out to the community. Yeah. And to kind of just finish off that thought, we can expect another allocation in 2024, 2025, 2026. You can see from this that it can vary a little bit. This is a little bit of a variation or deviant than I had anticipated. What the state had told me was, you know, about between $100,000 and $120,000 a year is what, you know, the city could anticipate. But you can see in 2022 that that number is a little bit less.
Quick question for you. So you said that we have the $92,000 in hands now and if the council approves this tonight, you would go ahead and request the remaining portion? I read in the packet that the minimum request from community members is $25,000 loan. Is that correct?
Yeah, $25,000 to $50,000 is the range that you can request. Yeah, $25,000 to $50,000 is the range that you can request, that's what's in the draft guidelines tonight.
Okay, so, I mean, $92,000 isn't going to go very far if we get an influx of loan requests, which the community seems to be excited about. So I'm wondering, how quickly can the city expect to receive those remaining years to have money in hand in order to be able to get those loans out to the community?
Yeah, so just using the 2019, so we did that request because we were running up against a deadline, so we needed to make that request to get at it. We're not hitting an immediate deadline with the rest of those year fundings at the moment. And I want to guess that the, not guess, but I don't have the exact date in hand, but from when we made the request till we had a check in hand was less than two months.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think, you know, we can make that request immediately. They don't make it a hard process, and it seemed to go pretty smoothly for the 2019, so.
I'm just thinking of this year's construction season, whether or not it's reasonable to think that people will have money in hand to make improvements this year?
We have been going at a very aggressive timeline to give that opportunity to them. So I'll get to a timeline here in a second, and hopefully we can. I don't think the plan is to allocate all 553,000 under round one, but something like maybe half of the money, and in a second, I'll talk about maybe the strategy or the thinking behind how we break that up. It doesn't have to go all in one round, we'll probably do another round early next year, but we do want to get some of it out, so that it can be taken advantage of this construction season. So this is showing you proposed timelines, we did hit a couple of recent milestones, including we had a public outreach meeting earlier on May 1st, yeah, earlier this month. Got a lot of good questions related to the loan process, certainly wanting to know what types of improvements were eligible under the program, and a lot of good questions just about sort of how the application process is going to work. And there was a few things in there that got staff thinking and led to us fine tuning some of the information that we're presenting to you tonight. As far as, you know, today, obviously, we're here seeking a resolution adopting the program guidelines. This would, then the next steps would be to have a second public outreach meeting, probably the first week of June, given my schedule, the second week of June. And what we'd be doing at that outreach meeting is not gathering input, but actually telling you, this is what the program is, this is the application process, answering questions, and otherwise assisting folks with participating in the program. So we'll very much be promoting the program and looking to identify the appropriate folks that we're aiming to use this funding. We're looking at an estimated opening the application window, essentially, this is, you can now start giving applications to the community development department, that would be in mid to late June. Then we would also be doing that concurrently with releasing a request for contractor qualifications. So all the work does need to be done by a licensed contractor. And the reason we're taking this extra step by putting a list together is there's some intricacies within the program. This is CDBG money, it is, it does come with, you know, state requirements that we have to follow, and those are consistent with our program guidelines that we have for you tonight. But it's important for those contractors to understand, you know, what we need from them as far as reporting and whatnot. And by having that initial process with them, we can explain that, and hopefully, it's going to make the property owners' life easier, the contractors' life easier, and the staff's life easier when we go to do the reporting. Again, we're not really looking for much, do you have a business license, do you have a contractor's license? Hey, we got a few things we want to share with you, and you're on the list. So that'll become important, so the folks that are awarded the loans, we will be asking them to make use of the contractors off of that list. If there's a licensed contractor that they would like to use that's not on the list, just have the contractor come talk to us, and we'll have a very easy process to sign them up and have them be part of the program, so. But again, it's, we're wanting to have that interaction with the contractor to be able to explain some of the details of the program and a couple of extra things that we're going to need from them. We would, we're anticipating having the application window open for about two months, and then there'll be some additional time to complete the application reviews, they've all come in, we'll have the guidelines call for a loan committee to be set up, similar to what we did with the CDBG business loans, and then we would score the applications, and then those that score the highest would be offered the opportunity to receive a loan from the city. Just a little bit of a program overview. So again, the purpose of this program is to facilitate the funds to those longstanding members of our community that live in their homes, that are facing, you know, a necessary improvement to their home that they can't afford to complete themselves. And what we don't want to have happen is for their house to fall into a state of disrepair, now they're forced to sell it to somebody who can come in and fix it, and now they've been displaced, and the concern is they're going to have to leave our community, or they're not going to have a place to go. So we're trying to avoid that situation. So there's some eligibility requirement, you do need to own and occupy the home, it does need to be a single-family home, a manufactured home on a foundation would also be eligible for the program. And then there are some income limits, and the income limits are shown on page two of the program guidelines, and the household total gross income must be equal to or less than 120% of the area median income. And I do want to note that, well, and I'll get to this, the, you know, a household of four that's at 120% of the area income makes a decent amount of money. And again, the money is going to be aimed, you know, if you're of lower income, you're going to score higher than the folks that are making more money. I think that's just all I'm trying to say. So then you have the eligible activities, so, you know, if you have a roof repair, foundation work, window replacement, even exterior paint in some situations would support the longevity of the home. So we, so yeah, so essentially, folks will be asked to submit an application, some required documentation, proof of income, proof of ownership, et cetera. And then the loans are prioritized, so again, it comes down to your income, and then the urgency of repairs, and then the length of home ownership. So if it's a situation where you're on a low fixed income, you have a roof that's currently leaking and causing interior damage to your home, and you've been in that home for 20 years, that's somebody who's going to score high in our application process. Alternatively, if you're at just under 120% of the area median income, making $120,000, you have a roof that has a 30-year lifespan, and you're 20 years into it, and it's not really showing any immediate signs of dysfunction, and you've been in your home for a year, then you're likely to score lower through the scoring criteria. And then again, I mentioned that the work does need to be completed by a licensed contractor, and a homeowner may request a licensed contractor to be added to the city list. Spam is going up in price? I'm sorry, Dolores, I must have hit a button.
Which chair was the lady getting out?
Glad I wanted to know about Prince Harry, I'm just trying to. Thank you. So let me just, so certainly questions, and I think something that really sort of resonated with people at the last community meeting, and it's, you know, kind of similar to that philosophy of like, when you talk about economic development, you know, you hear a lot about, oh, we need to bring new businesses in, yeah, but it's also about bringing up those businesses that are already here, right? And then maybe that's already more important. Like, similar with housing, like, we talk a lot about, you know, what can we do to facilitate new housing projects in the city? And absolutely true, but at the same time, it becomes very important to take care of our existing housing stock, too, and that's really what this program's getting at. Very grateful to have Jeff Lucas with us from CDS, you may remember him from such project as the business loan program, where he helped us give out over $470,000 to local business. Grateful to have Sandy O'Farrell with Laco, who's been instrumental in helping us throughout the process. They're both available to answer questions tonight. And also add that both those groups are going to continue their relationship with the city as we go through this process. So Sandy specifically and Laco are going to be helping with the administrative side and dealing with CDBG and HCD and all the fun things that go with that program. Jeff Lucas and his team will be on board to help with the loan servicing for those folks that are lucky enough to get awarded. And again, their invoices are reimbursed through the grant that we've been talking about tonight. And again, just want to thank city council for their investment in the community development department, and if it wasn't for the amazing, dedicated, talented staff that filled those roles, I don't think we're here tonight presenting this program to you. So with that, happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Well, I'm really very, very pleased to see this program is extremely important to our community and to our longtime residents who are in older housing and need that assistance. My only concern is, since this is already kind of the end of May, and you've got, I mean, just the timeline, doesn't look like people are actually going to be able to proceed until kind of late summer, and we never know how long the construction season is. So just anything we can do to slice time off of that timeline so that there is a good window for getting the projects started this summer would be great, that's all.
And I know that you're not a banker, who would be handling approving the loans and looking at that paperwork-wise?
Jeff Lucas.
Jeff Lucas.
And he played a very much, in the CDS team, and they played a very much similar role with the loans that went out for the business loan program that we had.
And in the event that somebody defaults, do we hold, I guess, because they may already have a loan, are we second or something on this?
Yeah, where is Jeff at, because?
I can save that, um, oh, there you go.
Hold on, Jeff, we're getting you up on the screen here.
Oh, that's unsettling.
Oh, you're just a bubble, don't worry, Jeff.
I figure you had the answers, Jeff, so I figured just so people know that we're watching out for this money.
Well, you know, the program is designed so that it's a pretty thorough review of the documentation that's submitted following the state requirements. And it's designed, as Dusty was saying, so that those that most need or provided the funding, they have a priority for it. And we also have flexibility in the repayment schedule, so that these loans can be deferred for up to 15 years. And it's sort of like, when we do business loans, it's based on the debt service capacity of the borrower. So I really like the program. Now, your question was, you know, kind of handling this, well, we prepare a loan proposal based on all the information that we have, and then we submit it to the city's loan committee, and they have the documentation, and we make the presentation, but it's ultimately their decision on, you know, how to structure the final loan, if it gets approved or not approved. I hope that helps answer the question.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I would like to say that I really like this program, and I've liked it from the very start. And the thing that is interesting to me is, if you're in this category, and we've done this for a couple of years, why wouldn't you be ready for it when it came? I would come to the city every month to find out when the time was that I could get going on it and have all of my stuff in gear, ready to go. And I think that that's what we need to do, and I think there are people out here that really like this and think that it's going to be great, and it is great, and it needs to be publicized more, maybe. That's the only thing that I can say.
Yes, please.
So 100% agree with you, councilmember Stransky. And so we'll continue to use the usual avenues, you know, Facebook, the newspaper, we'll post flyers around town. I think if staff interacts with people who we think might be interested in the program, we'll have that face-to-face conversation, we can have some information on the city website. But another thing that's going to push this program, I think, is after round one, when you see your neighbor getting a new roof, and you find out what it is, I think that's going to bring some awareness amongst the community. And that's why, you know, round two, we might see some more applicants than round one, and it might be a reason to, you know, have a little bit more money reserved for round two out of that allocation than round one. So that's something that we're thinking about. And yeah, we'll, you know, well, the idea is to at least open the program up, you know, once a year, and it's a revolving loan program. So again, I mean, you know, Jeff noted that, you know, it might be 15 years or so before we get paid back, but when that money does come back, it's a revolving loan program. And the beautiful thing in my mind is that we then get to reallocate it out. So, you know, this isn't like this program is for five years, I mean, we're setting it up to be, I know, hopefully, 100 years or longer.
Dusty, a technical question, you mentioned earlier you had to draw down that 2019, was there some sort of timeline that you had to at least ask for that money first before?
Yeah, yeah, they said, Dusty, you better get your request in, or you don't get the money.
Was it a use it or lose it kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was wondering.
We decided to use it.
Okay.
We got the check.
What I'm hearing from lots of people is they just want to know when the application period is going to open, because many people are aware of it, and I think a bigger concern is going to be how you're going to decide which applicants will, I think you're going to have plenty of qualified applicants, you're then going to have to go to the next set of criteria to decide which applicants to choose out of the large pool.
It's going to come down to your income and the severity of the issue, so if, and it's not, we don't, the applicant's going to make their case, but you're also going to get a site visit from staff. And that's, there's two things happening there, at least two things, or two key things. One, we're going to verify that what you have down on paper also matches up with, you know, our building official, our co-compliance officer. But the other thing is that you might say, hey, I need a new roof, it's failing. And when we come out there, we're going to go, ooh, you don't only need a new roof, there's also been some interior damage, and we'd like to add that to your application, too, and modify your scope of work. So there's going to be that check and balance that happens throughout the application process. But again, the idea is, is really just, to repeat myself, if you're of the income level that, you know, at the lowest income level, if, and the severity of the issue is, oh my gosh, if we don't get this money in your house and get this repair done, there's a high likelihood that your house is going to fall into disrepair in the next five years, and you're going to be displaced. Those are the situations that are going to get top priority. And again, the other thing is if you bought that house in that position, condition, a year ago, versus you've been here for 20 years, that's another factor that's going to go into the scoring criteria that the loan committee's going to be responsible for. And that loan committee will include, again, modeling after what we did with the business loan program, and it will include staff, but it'll also include, you know, a community member that's in a position to provide, you know, professional input on that.
So in late summer, will we see an increase based on this particular pot of money? Will we see an increase in workload to permitting and code and planning, or is there one particular department that's going to fill the brunt of this workload?
It is going to be the community development department, it's going to be the planning, building and code enforcement divisions, and really what makes this possible and a lot of the heavy lifting that's being taken off of us. Well, first to answer your question is, yeah, we, so, and councilmember Connie was making this point of, you know, if you have $25,000 to $50,000 loan, and you're giving out $300,000, I mean, we'd love, the need is far greater than that, but it's not going to result in substantial projects that's going to cause an issue for the department's capacity to handle that in a timely fashion. What is something that we don't have capacity, in some cases, the expertise for, is like all the loan processing part of it, that's a specialized service. Jeff and his team take that off our load, and we're able to pay them through the grants from HCD. And then dealing with, a lot of times, you've heard me say, like, getting the grants, the easy part, dealing with the administrative reporting is kind of the harder part, as well as, of course, implementing the program. We have Sandy O'Farrell on the team at Laco to take the lead on that part. So not, there's not a workload on staff, but we've been very conscious of that, and are grateful. are grateful to be able to share that with CDS and Laco.
Go ahead. I have two questions for you. The first is, is this program only available to people within city limits, or would it also apply to people on city services who are just outside of city limits?
Only available to residents within the city.
Within city limits, okay. And then my second question is really more of a recommendation. Perhaps we could consider putting a flyer into the utility bills, at least for the second round, to reach more homeowners who might be eligible for the program.
Thank you. And I'll just also add that there's some really cool, dedicated, motivated people working for the county, and they've reached out to me to help understand how we're cleaning this program because the county's interested in maybe doing the same, or at least they are at the staff level and they want to explore and ask questions, so.
Trailblazer.
What's that?
Trailblazer.
Trailblazer, yeah.
I just wanted to ask, Dolores, is it possible to lower that one curtain because I'm...
I have to do this to see.
Well, you know, there is no place to...
It's the red one.
The next one, yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
And with that, Dusty, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public with questions or comments?
That's...
Go ahead. Third row and then fourth row. Now, if you'll begin by just stating your name for the record, even though we know who you are.
Dr. Zachariah, 226 School Street. Good evening. I did attend the first meeting, and I have one concern. There are so many layers of groups that, to take care of that process, and I'm just thinking if we can rethink it, because they do, this department is overloaded. But there are a couple of companies there, I'm not sure why they're in that layer, because the less layers you have for the project, that would expedite the project. But my main concern is, and I discussed that in the first meeting, that loan, the money's coming from the state, the government, correct? And we need to pay it back, which I have no problem with that. It's a 15-years loan or advanced money. And I've found out that when they process that money, they're going to put a lien on your house, correct?
That's correct.
Correct. But that defeats the whole purpose. If all these people are low-income and you put a lien on their house, which is, it's a government money. I understand that it needs to be paid back, but I think, and I'd like to hear our attorney's opinion on that, instead of having a lien on these low-income people's houses that they are barely trying to fix something, create a note.
Well, notes, notes are typically secured by a deed of trust on property, and so it's basically the same thing. You foreclose on...
No, you can write a note in a different way than putting a lien on a house.
But if you went to get a home equity loan on your home...
Yeah.
There's going to be essentially a lien.
That's a, that's a loan, but this is not a loan. I know we're saying the word loan. It's a funds brought to us from the government to help the people to fix their homes.
It's a loan.
It's a loan.
Yeah, but with the government, a lot of homes are not, you don't have to pay it back, they're forgiven.
But not this one.
That's a rent.
But that in 15 years, I'm just saying, in my opinion, 15 years, low-income housing, you put a lien on it, that's going to impact all the potential finances for the future. If you can't find another way, instead of having a lien, secure a loan by something they have, I mean, they barely, they are low-income. What are they, what are they going to have?
I think it's important to hear your feedback, and I think that what you may be asking for is a program similar to this, but that maybe is grant-funded. And certainly, if we hear that there's something out there in that realm, we can seek it out and see what might be available.
And I have another idea I want to throw in the mix. I think it's important for Willett's to enhance the appearance of all these homes. And I've been talking to a lot of people, there is a not fixing their homes because of the rigid, not look at me, of rules. So maybe you can give the residents a two-year period of fix their own home, there are no...
Your time is up.
Yeah, I know, I heard it. I heard it, but I just want to finish my sentence.
You were hurt, though, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next row, if we could start over here on the left.
Oh, I really just wanted, I'm Sandy O'Farrell with Laco Associates. I just wanted to make a clarifying, do I need to go first?
You do.
Oh, just a clarifying point.
Yeah, just wait till you're up there, that way our folks that watch on the television are able to hear the same information.
So again, Sandy O'Farrell with Laco Associates, and Dusty made the comment that he was told you got to pick this money or you're going to lose it. 2019 does sound like it was a really long time ago, but this is a very backward-looking program. And the city entered into an agreement with HCD last year to secure those 2019, 2020, and 2021 funds. So you have $371,000 available now to draw down. They gave the five-year estimate of $553,000, but we don't know yet those last two years. We were given kind of...
Those are estimates.
They gave us 2022 in December, but it's just kind of an estimate, so.
Thank you for that clarifying point.
So the program is on track, is my point.
Okay. Is there anyone else from the public that wants to address us?
I think Jeff has a...
Go ahead.
Very brief comment. The program requirements, the state program requirements require that we have a lien. It's not something we can waive if it's a requirement of the program in response to the earlier discussion.
All right, we've heard from the public, so I'm bringing it back up here. Go ahead.
And Jeff, a question for you. In essence, because it is a lien and this is a loan program, and I guess I'm just kind of maybe restating the obvious, but this is giving us an opportunity to provide loans for folks that may not necessarily qualify for a conventional loan. Is that how you see this? So some of these folks wouldn't have been able to borrow this money anyway from, and they're going to be looked at on different criteria, but it is a loan. And the idea also, I'm assuming, is that it also provides seed money, that if we continue with this year after year, that there'll be money in the kitty to re-loan out again, and it provides a pot of money that, once paid back, can be re- lent. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Again, I'm kind of restating the obvious, but I kind of wanted to explain for the folks out there that this is giving us an opportunity to seed a program. We had something similar years ago, I believe, that we were able to do, and I know that the business one didn't need to be repaid if they did certain things, but this one we...
Yeah, there is that.
Go ahead.
You're correct, Councilmember Gonzalez, and that was rare air. That was tied to kind of the COVID situation, and it came through CDBG funding, and that was, my understanding, that was the one and only time that we were able to give that money out and essentially not have it be paid back. And Jeff's shaking his head, he's the foremost expert on CDBG stuff. And it wasn't explicitly stated, but I do want to make folks aware again in promoting the program, these are 0% interest loans. The city is not trying to make money on this. We are taking every advantage that the state gives us to prolong the life of the loan. We could average this, we're not. Again, we're trying to do what we can within the parameters of the state to make this, you know, useful to the property.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution accepting this program.
I'll second it. Oh, go ahead, Larry, let's take Larry's second.
All right. So Councilmember Connie made the motion, and Stransky made the second, and I will call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Strong?
Ditto.
Stransky?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Dusty.
Thank you. All right, we're back to Walter with item 9D.
Hello, this is to adopt a resolution authorizing the advertisement of the steel-water main replacement project with an ad alternative of replacing the adjacent sewer mains for combined project cost of $1,227,955, which I need to amend, we had a last minute, it's in your packet, an engineer's stamped engineer's estimate. It changed slightly to $1,265,425. So that's the change. This actually was brought to you and approved in August of last year, but just with the water main portion of it. When we reviewed it afterwards, as I got into my position, we looked at it and thought it would be less disruptive. There were aging sewer lines that are intertwined within those water lines, and it made sense to do it as one whole project so that we don't disrupt those streets later and add the sewer. This will be funded by both the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds, and we're asking to go forward this to go to bid.
Any clarifying questions from council?
One of the benefits of this project, and it was stressed before, is that the steel-water lines that we're replacing on five streets are going to replace the majority of the existing steel-water lines, the aging lines that have contributed to some of the brown water, and that's going to take care of the last big portions of the old steel aging water lines in the city limits.
Yes, this item very importantly addresses brown water.
It is, yeah.
The public asked for a solution, and this is our first, I wouldn't say it's our first, but it's our first significant...
Yes. It's a big project, it'll be one of the biggest ones we do this year, but I think it's going to have significant impact on the community, and adding the portion of wastewater lines makes a lot more sense in terms of money spent, that we can get everything done at once and have less disruption later if we do all the infrastructure. And later on, we'll be, you know, it might be included in some of the paving projects to do the overlay on it, yes.
Okay. Any questions from council?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate not doing like in the past where we dug the streets up, paved, and then came back a year later and dug the streets up and paved, so I appreciate...
And we're trying to avoid that and everything. Plus, we're putting typically on some of these projects where we're doing new pavement, there's a five-year moratorium. That PG&E and everything cannot tear up those streets, so we preserve them. So that's why we're trying to do as much infrastructure work previous to doing the final cap and sidewalks on some of these streets.
Well, we've had some long conversations about this, happy to see this before us. Is there any, buddy from the public that wants to address us on this item?
And let me add, this is another Laco project that we've been working on. This has been for the last couple of years. The addition of the sewer is just in addition to what was already approved in August.
Thank you.
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes. I was waiting for the excitement.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We are all eager to get rid of brown water. I'll call for the vote.
Councilmember Connie?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for a point of order, we need to have that motion reflect the revised engineer's estimate of $1,265.
Okay.
I amend my motion to include the new number.
And my second also comes...
Okay.
The stamped engineer's estimate is in your packet, that reflects the current price, the combined price, yes.
All right. All right, we're moving on to item 9E, the discretion to revise the municipal code, and it looks like Connie is going to address us as the contract planner.
Do you have that loaded, the PowerPoint?
I think I see it, I'm trying to find my mouse, I'm sorry. Turn sideways. Sorry, what? You just got to be sideways. Be sideways? All right. He traded it.
We have this in the paper, too.
Yes, that's right. Thank you for your mind. All right. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Lilani Shine, contract planner with the City Development Department. So wanted to bring back, this is our second informational discussion on sidewalk ordinance revisions. So we discussed potential ordinance revisions on November 8th, 2023, and we took the comments from that meeting, and we've tried to come up with some other language and try to bring that for presentation and discuss that today. So several of the potential municipal code revisions that we're going to be discussing today are included, but not limited to a sidewalk liability ordinance, a point-of-sale ordinance for sidewalk repairs, and general sidewalk repair and maintenance requirements within the code. In addition to these code revisions, we also want to talk a little bit about establishing a sidewalk repair hardship program, something that was identified by council at the last meeting as a priority. So our next steps in this presentation, we're just going to try to focus on four of the main topics. So starting out with some of these attachments, we've created a draft fact sheet, and that's attachment C in your staff report packet. This fact sheet is designed to provide a public update about the sidewalk ordinance updates that we are trying to bring forward. The second thing that we're looking at is sort of combined, the liability and point-of-sale ordinances, those code revisions, that's attachment A in your staff report packet. And so that language is intended for council review today, and if you have additional comments, we would like to take those and revise it and bring that back again. We're also going to talk about resolutions, which are outlined in the staff report and agenda summary, for two things. One, to create a hardship program for low-income qualifying property owners, and also as another incentive to waive administrative fees, so that would be like encroachment permit fees for a period of six months for all property owners, to help encourage those sidewalk repairs. And so again, those resolutions are also, you know, up for review and discussion today on how we can establish those. Also, in the packet is future policies and ordinances under attachment B. That's a very colorful table that we'll get into later, but the goal behind that table is to highlight a list of ordinances and policies that support sidewalk ordinances, and also the potential timeframes for implementation, since they're not part of the sidewalk ordinance revisions that we're bringing forward at this time. So the fact sheet, that's attachment C, there's a small screenshot of what that design looks like. It has four main sections. So background, just to go over why we're trying to address these code revisions at this time, and a second section that also is part of the background that discusses the state highways code, which describes the responsibility for private property owners to fix their, and maintain their sidewalks. And then talking about why property owners should fix their sidewalks, why it's important for the community and property owners, and contact information. That way, if people have questions and they're wondering, what else can I know about this, we can give them a direct line to contact us. I'll just pause real quick. Are there any questions or comments about the fact sheet as it was in fact? Okay, moving along. There we go. So this table that's shown as the background, this is also attachment B in the packet, but it's zoomed in on the upper section to show elements of a sidewalk ordinance. So during the November 8th informational discussion, we wanted to try to look at the different elements of our current sidewalk ordinance and different areas that we may need to update. And so we've gone ahead and summarized this here, where we can see clearly that we're missing a liability ordinance, and we also do not have a cost-sharing program, which is, a cost-sharing program is not required by the state, but it helps community members when they need to implement these repairs. So Willett's has elements of a sidewalk ordinance currently established, and those are those orange checkboxes, but those are also code sections that we think may need to get revised with these other updates, and that's why they're still highlighted here. So that's sort of why we're here today. We recognize that there's some elements of sidewalk ordinance that we could add, and we also want to update the elements that we currently have. So the first code revision that's in the packet, attachment A, is talking about sidewalk liability ordinance. So although by state law, private property owners are responsible for private sidewalk repairs and may be liable for any injuries resulting from sidewalk defects, California courts have held that a city is... California courts have held that a city is and can be held liable for injuries as a result for private sidewalk damage if the city does not adopt a sidewalk liability ordinance. So the effect of this ordinance on adjacent property owners is to establish that legal responsibility and also encourage, so even though they're currently responsible for those repairs, this is encouraging them to address them when it comes to their attention. The city of San Jose has court-tested liability language in their sidewalk ordinance. And the city of Oakland also modeled their sidewalk language from San Jose. And so San Jose language is also what we chose to add and model here in attachment A. So moving on. The other code revision we're looking at, a point-of-sale ordinance. So this is not required by state code sections, but this is an example we saw with other jurisdictions, namely Oakland, where through, similar to our sewer lateral program that we currently have established, where prior to property title transfer or if there's construction or remodeling estimated to exceed $100,000, or when unsafe conditions become known, that is the trigger for the time that property owners are responsible to complete those repairs. So the difference in this proposed point-of-sale ordinance compared to the current sewer lateral inspection ordinance would be that we're proposing a, similar to Oakland, a self-certification of the sidewalk improvement. So a contractor that's on an approved list by the city could work with a buyer, seller, and self-certify. That way, the city is not having to go out and do inspections and potentially holding up a sale. We'd want to see the sales be expedited in the way that they can be if we have a list of contractors available. And so within five years of issuance of that compliance certificate, that self-certification, property owners may be subject to random inspection. So city staff could follow up if there's complaints or if it's just a timed period where they want to go out and do inspections. So moving on to a hardship program. So currently, Willis does not have a hardship program. And council discussed wanting to have a hardship program specifically assisting low-income private property owners. And I believe Dusty just presented a great presentation on the different housing allocation program that has a revolving loan program for housing rehabilitation. So those annual funds, it sounds like were approximately $100,000, $120,000. Correct? Thank you. A little over. And so thinking of something like that, a similar revolving loan program, is what we're trying to figure out, if that's something council is interested in creating here. So as an example, city of Oakland provides financial hardship approval, subject to funding, to a maximum expenditure of $50,000 annually. So it doesn't necessarily award all qualified applicants. It's subject to funding. So in addition to this hardship program, through resolution, we're talking about a fee waiver. So this would just be waiving those encroachment permit fees, administrative fees for the sidewalk permits for a period of six months. I believe staff identified six months due to the lower cost of the permit fees and wanting to promote the program a little bit more widely. And so moving on. Future ordinances and policies. So what we're going through in the attachment A and the additional language addresses liability and addresses a point-of-sale ordinance. We're also talking about creating cost-sharing and financial assistance. So those are the main elements that we've addressed here. However, there are some things that we're not talking about today, such as tree removal, tree planting. And so that, those types of issues would need to be addressed through an urban forestry ordinance. So that's not part of this discussion today, but that urban forestry ordinance has been identified already through ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act Projects List for 2024. So it is in process, and would try to work with this program as we establish it. That is what I have, I believe. Any questions?
We all have lots of questions.
Sure.
I'll start at this end of the table.
Okay. So I like the idea of cost sharing, but I'm confused if you're suggesting that there would be some funding source that we could identify, or are you suggesting that we would take money, for instance, out of the general fund in order to offer loans to the community?
Yeah, so I think we're still discussing that with our finance director if there's a way to use, similar like Oakland had used a tax measure for their transportation funds, if there's a way to potentially use those transportation funds. It may man, you can explain personally.
We were looking into it a little bit more about like the transportation funds and whether or not the sidewalks are included as part of the road. We have some precedent from way back when. We're trying to follow up on that right now, saying that that is part of it and it can be used for that. So it would be.
I would say that I would not be as excited about using transportation funds for the sidewalks, even though I think sidewalk improvement is important. I think community members are pretty vocal about seeing road repairs, and I think the community consensus would probably be roads before sidewalks. I know we need both, but if there was a different funding source available, I would support using that instead. The other comment that I wanted to make is about the timeline for waiving fees. I think six months is enough time. I think even though technically the community members are already responsible for their sidewalks, 99% of people don't know that. And so when we roll out a new ordinance saying you're now liable for your sidewalk and your sidewalk repairs, six months is barely a construction season. So something like 18 months, 12 months, 18 months, I think is more generous and gives people more time to potentially gear up to having some work done and benefit from those waived fees. Thank you.
So, is this already on? It's on now, I guess. I guess I want to clarify the people that are in houses that don't have any sidewalks at all versus people that have sidewalks that are dangerous because they're, you know, people can stumble and fall. And I just want to know what is the requirement? There are several blocks that I know of, just, you know, from going around town, that are almost rural in nature. They're still in the city limits, but there's, you know, like three or four blocks in a row that are on the hills that don't have sidewalks. If somebody in one of those houses is selling their house, do they have a little strip that they have to put in of sidewalk? Or could they contribute to a fund that could then be targeted to places where there is more pedestrian traffic and where there are dangerous conditions? So anyway, that's a concern that I have. I don't particularly feel the need to have every single block out in the outskirts of city limits have sidewalks. It's not a priority for me, but I think they have to be treated fairly, and everybody has to contribute to the places that really need pedestrian traffic and make it safe. So that's my question, is how do we handle that?
That's a great question. Yeah, no, I think we tried to discuss some of that too. And yeah, I think that there's, are those state requirements where, yes, you need to meet ADA and have sidewalks in areas, but at the same time, forcing someone that sells their property to just have a piecemeal strip, I don't think that's the goal or intention here either. I think we tried looking at, San Francisco's got something called like a Better Streets Plan. And so I think finding a way to create a policy and identify different areas based on the location criteria. So like what you're talking about, if it's a location where it's, you know, a dead end, there's no other areas, different requirements. Finding a way to write a plan or a policy that that way we could then allocate and potentially if there's, if council wanted to support, you know, additional funds for just general sidewalk repairs for different areas, then you could prioritize those areas. So I'm not sure it's necessarily addressed with what we've proposed here today, but we're talking about that and trying to see if that's an option to take a look at that.
Okay, well, I went strongly in favor of looking at that because I think it's sort of silly to have a little tiny strip of sidewalk in an otherwise rural area that doesn't have sidewalks. And it's really important to have our walkable city not be unsafe. So, you know, if we could use a fund, you know, like we did with development to contribute towards a future intersection improvement that they're just part of, that they don't have to actually go do the work, you know, something like that. I think that would be very helpful. And I agree with what Greta said about a longer window because it just takes people a while to find out what's going on, to gear up to get on board. But I think waiving the fees is a good way to encourage people to make these improvements.
Great. That's helpful. Stransky?
Yes. These things have been tried before, and they didn't work because the city did not push it. And we were talking this morning, Brian and you and I, and it just doesn't work because there are people in the community that have this street where they start to go up, and it would be one section in a town of, you know, and you might go a half a mile before you come up to the next piece of that's that. I just think that if we make this aware, the people aware of it, and I mentioned the same thing that Greta said, people just don't realize it that they're responsible for it. And so consequently, once this comes out, and I think it's a step in the right direction to get people aware of it so that we can come up with something that is palatable for both areas in town and also both people that can afford it, people that can't afford it. And that's the one thing that I mentioned today was that when you sell your house, that that be one of the things, like the laterals. And go from there. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
A couple of questions. In the discussion about waiving the permit, are you talking about waiving the construction of the sidewalk and the encroachment permit? Or is there no, is there no permit required for the construction of the sidewalk? Is it two separate permits that are required for a sidewalk, correct?
Well, currently, it would just be an encroachment permit as the administrative fees that we're talking about waiving. So it wouldn't be the.
But there are two permits that are required, correct?
For a new sidewalk?
No.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Mayor Rodriguez, and councilmembers. David Bull's building official. Currently, it'd be one permit is, so it'd be an encroachment permit. So building permits don't start until back of walk. So that's the, the sidewalk is still considered the city's right-of-way, even though we're talking about homeowners taking care of it. To the back of walk is the right-of-way, and so you just need an encroachment permit for that.
So only if they were, they were improving the sidewalk that was beyond, say, that four-foot section or whatever section was identified in front of their property would only require an encroachment permit? It only requires the additional permit if it's expanded beyond that right-of-way?
Correct. If you're, if you're, if the work you're doing goes beyond the back of walk, that's where the building permit process starts. And you're no longer in, you're no longer in the city's right-of-way. Now you're only on private property, and that's a building permit. And that doesn't require an encroachment permit. So it's kind of the back of walk is the dividing line.
Okay. Because I was just thinking, like, for some people, it may, they may only need the encroachment permit, while others may need an encroachment permit and an additional permit. And it was interesting to hear that both, that at least two councilmembers had thrown out the idea that six months was too short. Because when I thought about this, I thought six months, not only are the planning stage of making it happen, but now you just told me I have this financial burden. So for many households, you know, if you were already struggling, we're talking about, you know, the, how, what was it? 88% or something like that of the housing stock is not up to par. Well, you have to ask yourself, why is that? And it's the financial barrier. The cost of construction improvements is incredibly high. And now we think that somehow throwing a sidewalk improvement on top of that is going to really change the situation. For many people, this is going to feel like another layer of government, another layer of financial burden. So I would ask at the bare minimum that we give them the 24 months for the encroachment permit. And that's a small incentive because this is going to be a financial hardship for people.
I had a couple other comments real quick. I was curious too. I know that we've been working on the urban forestry, but we haven't really talked about the city's accountability in terms of the tree care. So if my sidewalk is lifting, and I didn't plant that tree there, that was a city's tree, what, how will that work? You know, it sounds like from reading through this, that essentially, it's my property now. Whether I planted the tree or not, it's now my problem.
I believe that's how the state code reads it, yes. But yeah, if the city thinks that, you know, we want to take responsibility for city trees, splitting the cost for that could seem reasonable.
Yeah, there needs to be something, something, something in there. And what if, what if the homeowner says, you know, I don't want this tree on my sidewalk. It's causing trouble. It's going to continue to be a problem. What authority will the homeowner have when they decide to replace the sidewalk to say, you know, I just don't want this tree here anymore? I know that it's going to continue to cause me more hardship.
Well, I think some of the urban forestry ordinance would probably also address planting and replanting requirements. And with those replanting requirements, it would also probably include an appropriate species list. So you're not picking a tree that is definitely going to uplift your sidewalk in a year and cause other issues. So a tree ordinance is where the city can begin to address both tree removal and tree planting and having like an arborist that's going out to identify those issues. And the city's mapped a lot of the city trees, but not all of the city trees. It's like a lot of the trees in the parks have been mapped. So that's something where having an arborist on staff, I think, or having an arborist available through the urban tree ordinance is what would be needed, yeah.
And then under physical impact, I am concerned about item two, which says that the city would have the right to recover from property owners and potentially their insurance companies if somebody trips and falls. So not only do would this ordinance mean that I have to fix up my sidewalk, but it just put more responsibility on me if there's an injury that's there from an existing condition that I may or may not have anything to do with. So that particular item's of concern. And then in the beginning of the document, under the summary of request, I am not in favor of item B, C, or D, which are the triggers. So I understand exceeding 25% of the value of the structure. I think that's a good, for our community, I feel like that's a good starting point. If I'm altering, if I can afford to alter my building 25%, or I'm purchasing a new piece of property, it makes sense that you upgrade the space. But if you're going to do $10,000 or more in repairs, $10,000 is, it's peanuts nowadays. Like, everything costs a fortune. So that seems like a lot of people are going to be having to do work very quickly. Or.
Those are the existing.
Yes.
Yeah, I apologize. I was trying to jump in.
Or I see it as a barrier because what's going to happen is maybe I had something small that needed to be repaired, and I'm probably not going to do it now because of the trigger.
The $100,000?
Right, so that's what they're trying to address.
They're trying to clean that up. Yeah.
It's going to be increased to $100,000. That's the proposal.
Okay. It says right here in the summary, $10,000.
Right, that's currently on the book.
Yeah, clarify that as a current.
Changing it to $100,000. Okay. And then the modification of the square. I really think that it should just be 25. I guess my point is, I think it should be 25% or the sale, period, as a way to kind of get the program rolled out. And I don't want, I don't, I'm not in favor of any other...
I think Davey has clarified this.
I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt. So those items are current items and what we're proposing is the $100,000 building permit threshold or change of ownership. So those are what's currently in place, which is very...
Those are, okay.
I believe those are $19,000. So $10,000 in 1980 was a lot more back then. Now it's every, pretty much everything you do.
I got confused between the proposed and the existing.
You are absolutely correct that those are ridiculous and you want to step up to it.
I remember we had discussions about that before, but then I did get confused. So just for clarification, the proposal is $100,000 or the sale of the property. I can live with that.
Sorry. Or, or a major defect where we inspected and there's a major hazard and we said, you have to take care of this. That's the only...
So the city would have, the city would have the ability to come in and say that this, this is...
Consider this condition. Like a code enforcement situation. Like if they went because there's a barking dog and they know there's a big gap in the sidewalk.
Right. So would there be a definition to some extent of what that might be? Because I mean, we just did a bunch of grinding through the city where the asphalt's lifting a half an inch versus an inch, four inches. Is there any criteria where it could fall on that you would use these, this matrix to define that? Or would it just be solely up to the discretion of the department?
One of the things we're working on right now with Precision Concrete, the company that did the grinding, is they're doing full comprehensive sidewalk assessment.
Oops. Sidewalk assessment of every sidewalk in the city limits. They've got two more weeks on it. They've already been working on nearly three. It's pretty comprehensive. Fort Bragg has already entered into that. What it's going to do is give us a whole mapping program and verify conditions of sidewalk and where improvements need to be made, either grinding or full replacement. So we'll have that information to base some of this on.
I understand that. But let's say that Precision comes back and says, we can grind these spots, but we can't grind in front of House A. Does that then mean that the city, as a part of the code enforcement, would say, okay, House A, your sidewalk is, is lifting three inches, four inches, we can't grind it, this needs to be replaced? And then it would then trigger, trigger this even though they didn't just purchase their property and they didn't, they didn't spend $100,000? I guess I'm trying to really understand the...
If it's a hazard, I think it's going to be, code enforcement's going to...
Yeah. So regardless, so currently we have that ability and with the new code, we have the ability. So if we have a tripping hazard that needs to be addressed and we get a code enforcement case, we can, we can actually do that right now through the state highway code and tell you to fix it. And in our new code, we can tell you to fix it. These thresholds, you know, typically, you know, when we're looking at high dollar concrete sidewalk repair, that those $100,000 thresholds where, you know, maybe your house does not have sidewalks, where you have a large outlay of capital to repair that, those, that's the trigger we want to enable those types of repairs. So full like sidewalk replacement, those are when those triggers are going to hit. Regardless of sale or, or permit, if you do have a sidewalk that is, you need to repair or is a hazard, the city has a duty to, and if we fail that duty, then we increase our liability. So it's the city's obligation to recommend and request that the property owner to repair that sidewalk.
And I, and I do get that and I understand that that's in the current state code. But as we saw from other cities, not all cities require in their policy, and we are doing a policy amendment potentially, not all cities put that burden on their, their homeowners.
You're specifically talking about the liability portion?
I'm talking about small improvements to pavement. There are some cities who don't put that, like sidewalks lifting around trees and some cities will take that on as far, they have a funding source to take care of that. And that is a possibility that that could be part of our policy. I guess that's all I'm trying to say.
Yes.
Is on these small, on these small things where it is a code issue, if it was budgeted for, it is possible that it could be written if it was the council, if the council so chose. I'm just trying to think, you know, what are our options here?
So I, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump back to kind of two things. Councilmember Connie said and Vice Mayor Gonzalez, in the seed money about our PLHA loan and then access to funding for a loan program for sidewalk improvements. So, and obviously we don't have anything fleshed out, but we do have a loan program for the sewer laterals, which is a small amount. I believe we had a maximum of $3,500. People could get loans. No one's actually taken advantage of that that the city has. But the concept of a loan program for these where our community members are going to have to outlay it, you know, a sizable amount of money they may not have. But if the city was able to seed that for say five, 10 years, a small amount of money to create a pool of money that would be a revolving loan at, you know, no interest, that would allow community members to take advantage of that and put that in a revolving program where you could keep that going for years to come. And I think that would incentivize people to, you know, take advantage of that and repair their sidewalks.
That's precisely my point is that we have another alternative and that's exactly, that is the type of, that is the type of program I would like to see as a council member. And I'm not talking about major sidewalk, you know, 10, 15, 20. I'm talking about in front of your property, you've got a four, four foot slab, but you can't afford to replace that four foot slab, that there would be some, some mechanism in place that we could get this taken care of before it increases liability for the homeowner or for the city. And there's a way to, to take care of it with some small installment plan or something of that nature. That would be my hope. I'll turn it over.
Okay. Number one, I agree with the other council members about extending that time period. You know, if I buy a house or whatever, especially since we haven't had it out, this program that I would want it to be out there. So I agree with that. But question for Davey on the liability. So let's say I've got a big hole in my sidewalk and currently even the way it reads now, and let me correct me if I'm wrong here on the, it currently under the law, it's my responsibility.
Correct.
So code enforcement comes to me and says, Jerry, you've got a giant pit outside your, in your sidewalk. You've now put me on notice, you send me a letter saying that, does the city have, or do we have any culpability if somebody trips and falls?
We do, we do. So the California Government Port Liability Act creates liability for cities for dangerous conditions of public property. And so if there's a condition that's known to the city or should be known, that the city has constructive notice of the problem and if someone then injures themselves and the sidewalk is in the city's right of way and the sidewalk is city property, even though it abuts a homeowner and they've got responsibility to maintain...
So the fact that we put the homeowner on notice that they need to take care of it, even if, we're still going to be named in that lawsuit or?
Counting.
Okay. And, okay, so...
But the city, the city has the right to seek indemnity. So let's say, let's say someone trips and breaks their jaw or whatever on a dangerous condition in a, in the sidewalk that abuts somebody's residence. And in that scenario, the city might get sued as well as the homeowner. But that would, it might be two joint...
Would it be a situation where we would, so Davey comes, tells me about the hole in my sidewalk, somebody trips and falls, would the cities insure a sign that or somehow not seek to assign that to my homeowner's insurance?
Well, let's say that the city got sued, but not the homeowner. In that scenario, I would imagine that the city's insurance companies who would retain counsel, they would recommend the filing of a cross complaint for indemnity against the homeowner. Now, and now the homeowner turns that into their carrier and who hires their attorney to represent the homeowner. And we've got two defendants being sued by the plaintiff. And ultimately it will be a determination of which one of these defendants should bear the responsibility, should it be 50/50, should it be some other division of liability between the parties?
I just, I, I understand why we're talking about liability and obviously it's something that we have to be concerned about. But I, I just would like to remind us all that this isn't the city trying to push off liability onto individual property owners. City liability is community liability. So if the city gets sued, community members are paying for that. Taxpayer money is paying for that. Insurance rates are going up. That comes out of city budgets. So this isn't a question of trying to slough off liability, it's trying to reduce the liability for everyone in our community.
And I get that. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm a property owner out there and I, and I ignore Davey's, you know, advisement, notice or whatever. I mean, we have a duty to kind of correct things out there that we know are...
Exactly. If you're hypothetical, in your hypothetical, the city was put on notice of this dangerous condition in front of your house on the sidewalk, the city now has to act reasonably swiftly to, to correct it.
So we issue a notice to correct...
To avoid injuries.
And, but it sounds like we're going to get sued no matter what hypothetically in this case. I mean, I guess that's what I'm just trying to throw out there that no matter what, the community loses either way, the person still trips and falls.
But when they're not, we're found out fault.
Oh, I know. I, I know that that's the end result. I just, I'm kind of just trying to walk through this because in a perfect world, I mean, if I've got a giant pit outside my house, I would hope that I would fix it and I would hope that the city would say, Jerry, fix your pit. And ultimately, you know, nobody gets hurt, et cetera, but...
We're all going to inspect whether you've got a pit.
I'm going to go and see what this pit is all about.
But I guess my, I guess where I was getting with this too is I, I think we do need to, if not aggressive, at least in our notice out there to the public, like, hey, you've got to deal with this. I guess I've always looked at sidewalks a little bit, you know, going back to when my dad had put in sidewalk. I guess there was a program where the city cut a deal with, I think it's one of those deals where the contractor was coming through and doing sidewalk for the city and homeowners could jump on it and get it at a better price. But I noticed my dad, before my dad passed away, he was a little upset because the city had paid for some folks to get their sidewalk done and he had to pay for his. I was still chapped him for years that, that he had, you know, he, he paid for his, somebody else didn't. And I, not that I begrudge those that got the sidewalk and folks that get to walk on that. But I looked at Madge's example of, there's some areas where it doesn't lend itself to a sidewalk. I personally would not want to penalize somebody just because the design of the house is such that they're kind of a rural area, et cetera, and force them to pay into something that they're never going to get a benefit from. I mean, if I'm going to pay for a sidewalk, I want a joy by sidewalk. I'm, I'm sorry, but that's one. And then I see a lot of property and walking around town that there's literally, the property line is right up to the roadway. There's no way you can make me put a sidewalk in on some of those properties just because there's no way that it's ever going to have a sidewalk. And so there's a little bit of inequity there. So, so again, I would support part of this and like the other council members, I would like to see a list, a little time out there when we roll something like this out there just because I, I think that folks need to kind of warm up to it.
All right. I'm going to open it up to the public and see if there's anybody from the public that wants to talk on this item. All right. Hearing none, this was a discussion about a revised municipal code, correct?
Correct.
So we're not taking action. You're having debate about it.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
I get the sense that we don't want to wait too long though to ultimately adopt a new sidewalk ordinance because we really do want to lift that burden from property owners from the $10,000 trigger to something higher. So at some point, we're going to have to make a decision and give the go ahead, right? Do we have a timeline?
So do we want consensus on some of the points that were brought up then?
Correct.
So that we're giving clear direction. So some of the items that were brought up was the timeframe. We heard 12, 18, and 24 months.
Let's go with 24.
Yeah. I think that, especially because it's a new program.
Any objections to a 24 month period?
This is just waiving the...
The encroachment fee.
Just the encroachment fee would be my first. It is.
And it gives us time to roll it out with realtors, with everybody out there that, hey, when you're having these transactions, just like our sewer...
So you have direction on that. Let's see. We talked a little bit...
The threshold.
We talked a little bit about the tree care plan and wanting to ensure that these items are at least discussed during the urban forestry. I can live with that if everybody else is good with that. Anything else that was brought up, Madge?
When I commented about that there are areas in the city that don't really seem to have a high priority whatsoever. In fact, I would prefer if I were one of those owners in an area that, that looks more countrified and sloped and anyway, there's some very nice areas that don't have sidewalks. And I don't see, I think if they do $100,000 worth of remodel or they sell, sell their house, I think they should contribute to a sidewalk fund rather than be required to...
What if, what if we...
That's what, that's my thought. And that sidewalk fund could then be used for a revolving fund to help people who do need to repair their sidewalk and in an area that is more walkable and where we really want sidewalks, to be able to afford it with a low income or a no interest loan over a period of time. I, I just think that's, I don't think it's fair that people that happen to live in those rural blocks of the city don't pay in at all, you know? They, they benefit from sidewalks in the city too.
So with that said, I'd like to see a plan of exception as to which, which areas would we can agree that are a rule and that they would pay into a sidewalk plan. And then that, I don't know how you're going to assess the cost, but whatever that is would be the seed money for paying for potential or loaning out, something of that nature for those individuals who have small scale, say a four foot slab that's lifting, something of that nature.
There needs to be criteria. It isn't just, you know, these five blocks are exempt or whatever. That's one way to do it, but there should be criteria that if there's no reasonable hope of a contiguous sidewalk in an area and you meet certain criteria, then you are eligible for this.
So you still have to pay the money?
Well, it's a thought. I think, I think it's fair because, you know, yeah, I think that would be fair.
Would you support that?
Madam Mayor, if I may, just I want to jump in here. I just want to twist that perception. As Walton noted, we are going to receive an assessment of all sidewalks throughout the city. We can convert that into a map plan, map showing areas where sidewalks are in severe conditioning or state, or they're not as needed because of the, the development pattern, the location, the environment. So that could be brought into this discussion, saying there is a criteria plan or a conditions plan. And if you're a property owner in an area that was designated of high critical need, then there's a, you know, there's a burden on that property owner. If it's on the fringe, it's not going to, it doesn't add any connectivity value, maybe that's a lesser threshold for that property owner to make those improvements. At least it gives a empirical element to this decision. It's not arbitrary. It's not someone in that staff position saying, you're going to have to put a sidewalk in, you're not, or it comes to the council as an appeal. At least there's something that we have factual information to support.
I agree with that. I think that having more empirical, on the ground survey of what the conditions are is great. But I also think that it, it isn't really fair to the owners in, say, the central part of town, probably the places that have the lower, you know, lower cost housing and the lower, perhaps lower income people live in areas where they knew they need the sidewalks and they are the least able to afford it. And if you happen to be fortunate and you live out on the outskirts and you're selling your house for $500,000 and you don't have to pay anything, that doesn't make sense to me. So I think that there should be...
I'm going to agree with Councilmember Schraub.
I think there should be some equitability that everybody has this responsibility, but some people don't have to actually build the sidewalk.
Yes. Yeah, that's, yeah. That can be composed into language for the council to consider.
That can be composed into language for the council to consider.
Schraub's going.
The thing that really bothers me, and I said originally that it's, I think it's a thing that we need to really look at as a city, but nobody has brought the problem of the drainage. There are places in this community where the drain comes down, the water comes down off of the hill and runs right through your house or right through your property and you can't take a sidewalk curb and gutter because it doesn't work. And to give you a preview of this, if you go down Spruce Street off of Pine Street, you'll see where the city converted the asphalt out around so they didn't have to deal with this. Has nothing to do with the sidewalk or anything else. It's just because the city didn't want to deal with it because they didn't know how to do the drain.
So what Madge and I suggested and what Brian elaborated on as well would exclude some people, but they would still be required to pay something in to contribute to the walkable spaces that everybody else is using. Would you support that?
What I'm saying is that it wasn't the people that lived and owned the property, it was the city that ignored the drainage and made it out where it's out past where the curb and gutter would and the sidewalk would be, and they put it right out to the road so they didn't have to deal with it. I mean, you go down the street, you'll see.
No, I hear you. I'm just trying to figure out how what you're saying changes the direction that we're trying to give on the sidewalk. Are you saying that you agree or disagree? Because we're talking about, about having to replace sidewalk and potentially excluding some people, which seems to me that you would be in favor of at least an element of that because it proves your point that some people shouldn't need sidewalk. So do you?
But.
Or it's unrealistic.
Or it's unrealistic. We're agreeing with you.
But, no, you're not because what you're saying is that they didn't need it. They probably needed it, but the city ignored it. The city itself ignored it.
So are you saying that you want these?
Then I want the city to tear that out and redo it the right way then. I mean, if they ignored it the first time, why wouldn't they go out and tear it out and have to redo it?
So is.
The correct way.
Is your point that if property owners are supposed to put in the sidewalk and we're going to require it and the city put in some, what do you call them?
curb.
Curb. That you want the city to remove the curb before the homeowner has the expense of putting in the sidewalk?
No, no. If, if the city made the statement that that was where they wanted it, they have to replace, take that out and remain and put the curb and gutter and sidewalk in for the people.
Can I ask a clear?
Because they're the ones, they're the ones that made the mistake. It wasn't the homeowners.
So the city, so the taxpayers, because the city is a taxpayer, so the taxpayers should have to pay for that whole. So if I live on Block B and I'm making some small, some repairs to my home and I have to replace the sidewalk because of this ordinance, and somebody else lives on, lives on Block B and the city puts that curb there, are you saying that, that these taxpayers don't have to pay for any sidewalk?
I'm saying that.
That it's all going to come at, at all the taxpayers?
What I am saying is I need you to go look at it. If you think that, that the people, if what's the city is, when the city repaved the whole street.
So we're talking about, so we're not talking about abstract general policies. You're talking about, I get the sense that you're talking about a very specific block.
That is correct.
Rather than, because we're talking in broader terms about generically policies that, that impact everybody fairly in the same way. I'm not talking about any one particular block because that doesn't, that doesn't feel fair.
It isn't fair, but it wasn't fair for the city to do it originally.
Okay, so in terms of a policy, a policy that affects everybody the same.
Okay. I'm dealing with that. It's everybody the same.
Okay. That's, that's, we're, we're wanting to know where you stand on that so that we can all come to some kind of consensus to give direction because no decisions have been made. We're all trying to like, to come to an agreement so that we give clear direction. Because if you don't agree with the direction in terms of policy, then we, then they need to know that too.
Okay, I disagree.
Can I ask, I'm just curious, so the area that you're talking about is the area that the city?
Hold on. Could we have no discussion in the back, please, because we can hear? Thank you. Go ahead, Leilani, you have the floor.
Sorry, thank you. So is, what, the area that was replaced by the city, was that, I just want to understand, was that a street paved area or a sidewalk or both?
No, it was a street area that they repaved and instead of putting in the curb and gutter, they bypassed it by pulling the curb out so that the water would run behind it into the drain down the block.
Okay. Well, I'm thinking with the policies that we're talking about, looking broader, to your point, if we added, you know, a part of the criteria for policies to determine where the city might need to fund certain areas, it sounds like we would want to add drainage as maybe like a criteria for what you're wanting to look for for different locations. Is that?
That is exactly right because you have to go and look at it. I mean, you really need to have to go look at it.
Thank you.
And it's on Spruce Street when you turn off a pine.
Okay. Thank you for framing that.
It's on the west side of the street.
I support the idea of looking for drainage as well.
I support, I support the idea, I support the idea of making that part of policy as well. I agree that. I just didn't want to address it as an individual project or rather a broader policy that impacts everybody equally.
You have, if you're going to make everything correct, then you have to go back and look at the history of it and find out why it was the way that it is. And that's the problem that Willets has, is that certain sections of town needed sidewalk curb and gutter and their buddy lived or, or the person that owned half of the town owned that area didn't have to do it. I mean, that was the general rule of the city of Willets. And I don't care who you say, in my area of town, there were people that we, let me just give you an example.
Madam Mayor, I think we're.
No, I want to really say this because I, I think that the people have to know this. It's, I was, I was a school teacher for 35 years and when it came to being, having a vote to give the schools more money, it would go down four or five times and there were six people in the community that would give a little bitty, little bitty thing that says, we, this, 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 want a okay for that. And it wouldn't even be anything and it would pass.
Okay. All right.
The city.
I'm going to have to stop you only because it's off-topic.
Thank you.
It's not the item that's before us.
Can I get one last piece of feedback to Leilani?
Yes.
I really like this flyer. Thank you.
Good, thank you. I want to take all the credit. San Jose did the most of it, but I'm glad you like it.
Thank you.
All right. So do you feel like you got enough direction?
I do think.
I think that the council, obviously, we, we put a lot of thought into this. We thought about all of our neighbors. We thought about, you know, we are, everybody who lives here is the city or all the taxpayers that pay into the system that makes it all work. So we're, we're trying to think in a very broad and fair sense and so I hope that this lively discussion comes off as one that we're, we're doing due diligence in our part to do our best and sometimes that can look a little, a little rough.
I just want to say thank you, Leilani. Again, I know you put a lot of effort in this and I honestly, I did have some people bend my ear regarding just the cost of sidewalk and, and how onerous it is and so, I think I had two conversations this week regarding, just because I asked a question, hey, we've got this thing happening and they're like, do you know how much it costs me to put a sidewalk in, et cetera? So it's very real. But at the same time, I also get it that we have some folks that ignore problems and we need, obviously, need to address that. I do like the updated thresholds, et cetera, just because 10,000 is nothing now. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. With that, I'm going to close item 9E and move on to the department monthly reports. They were in the packet and we can start. Kathy's not here for airport, but her report is in the packet.
The one thing I just want to add, I think was mentioned prior, the FAA, as they have been reviewing the Part 16 complaint that has been issued against the city and our management at the airport, an item has been dismissed. Basically, FAA, their response was to the participant in that, the named participant that your, your concerns really are not relevant, they're outside your scope, you can still operate at the airport. Airport's still operating within a safe window, so it has no merit.
All right. It looks like we got a new tenant parking area.
Yes. Basically, Walter had the crew, we took some old millings or grindings and leveled it out, cleared up an area that was kind of just, it got to be mud, dirt, dust, and that would introduce foreign objects onto the tarmac and the runway and that was not necessary. So we just applied some surplus material and it's looking pretty good.
All right. Good to hear. Community development.
Staying very busy, the only thing I wanted to add to the report is we're going to be making some, some calls to some influential people to see if we can work with Caltrans to get those downtown Willets signs resolved.
Say, to get what?
The downtown Willetts sign.
Oh.
As part of the.
We've done five years ago at this point. And even I grant out a patient. That was the only thing I had to add. Other than that, I've not been interested.
Can you just give a, I'm getting a lot of questions about the timeline for any potential improvements out of the Clean California Grant.
Yeah.
Which projects are at the top of the list that community wants to know? I know, but I just want you to throw them out there.
Absolutely. So again, what we're speaking to is a $3.7 million grant that the city received and the priority improvements are designing construction of 3,200-square-foot pavilion over in Bledsneider Park as well as a rehabilitation of the existing bathrooms. And that, both of those projects are in the, we're getting a scope of work from the third-party engineer that will be paid out of the grant and we're on, that'll hopefully put us on the timeline to realize construction early next year for both of those improvements. The other big priority includes a number of solar decorative streetlights along downtown Main Street as well as some additional lighting in Batcock Park along with the, a banner with self-support poles over essentially the intersection of Oak Street and Main Street. So these are items that were envisioned in our Main Street corridor.
And the lighting and the banner, you're expecting it to be put in place on next summer?
The, the design work is currently underway with contract with Taltree Engineering and I don't think we have an construction timeline for that yet, but there's an opportunity to get that done this year. We'd like to do that.
Okay.
And then just, the other priorities are, we are, we are planning with Caltrans and it's not solidly supported, it's the local.
Regular ways.
Thank you. And we're going to establish our first three dump days. So we're going to begin state and getting that planned and hopefully we can get that implemented in the next, you know, couple of months. We have that planned for each of years, over the next three years, we're getting that done. So we have $10,000 budget to support what we're on three dump days.
Councilmember Leilani?
Any update on the fountain for Batcock Park? I promised you in the hallway that we'd give up on that comment. Do we know when prepares that fountain?
That's currently being worked on and everything. We did a lot of work in short work getting the plumbing and electrical fixed on it. We already have the epoxy sealed on it, but the next step is going to be cutting out a bigger area for a better straining system, but it was originally built many years, decades ago and had a very small pump and straining system that had issues. So we're going to, in the next couple of months, be cutting out, putting a new strainer box there and new pumps. So we're expecting late this summer to have it up and working in epoxy and head back to functional. We'll be doing new lighting on it and repainting reboats any month. So that's still unfolding, yes, or is it?
Questions for Dusty? Two things. One is the, any progress on the vacant commercial building follow-up that's happening with that? And then sort of related is what is the timeline on the remediation of the Van Hotel?
Okay, very good. Just before I answer that, I just wanted to also add that there's a project website. If you go to the planning department tab off of the website, you'll, you'll see a, of your projects, you'll see a tab, Vacant California Grant. And so we'll be posting updates on there as well. Folks are always welcome to call the community development department, certainly talk to your council members, but also please use that as a resource. And there's also a survey out, it's also available on that website. We posted it to our Facebook, getting some feedback on putting our equipment, because we also have the party to improve the playground every year. So yeah, the city's established a vacant commercial building ordinance to deal with some of the longstanding vacancies, commercial, commercial buildings in Willets. And yes, we created a registration program. Unfortunately, we have some folks that are failing to participate in that program and that's turning into code enforcement matters now. So we're following up and issuing, taking it, using code enforcement procedures as authorized by that ordinance.
Do the existing vacant commercial buildings that are participating, is there any success in helping them find tenants or buyers? Is that?
You know, that, at its best, that is the intent of it. We essentially become like a, an extra real estate agent for you. It's often common for people that are looking to establish a business and will to contact our department to understand what spaces might be available, what property owners they can contact to support their, their respective business venture. And the idea through vacant commercial building ordinance is by having people register their building, we can get contact information either for the owner or local property manager. We can get square footage, we'll understand what your occupancy is, we'll have information that we can just deliver to you to assist in making that match. Unfortunately, what we've learned through this program is that. To fix up that space, there's no opportunity for the city to issue them a business license for any type of business. So that continues to be the main issue that we tackle on this part of dealing with the problem. It's less about demand to start a new business in Willets or not having the resource to understand who you should talk to. It's very much a situation. The other thing that's a little bit more minor to it is that in, especially in the downtown area, a lot of the vacant commercial buildings have no off-street parking or ability to provide it. And so when you talk to them about the need to get a variance, even though the ability to make those findings are likely there, but again, it has to go in front of the council with a staff recommendation, the legal process to bring you that with noticing and being able to refer it out to agency and go through proper protocol, I mean, if you had nothing else to do, it's still a two-and-a-half-month process, but it's probably more like a three-and-a-half month process. And that makes it very hard to do a sale when you have that variable in place. And that's something that we'll talk about a little bit more as we go towards, you know, the land settlement and then respective zoning changes. But that's a minor issue, I'd say. That exists for a handful of locations, but again, the majority of the issues is the buildings have the spaces that are available or vacant require substantial upgrades.
I just want to, and unfortunately, Davey Bowles left the chambers here, but one of the, I wouldn't say a success story, but 263 Main Street, that was on the vacant register. A new owner appeared on the scene. They worked with community development. You probably have witnessed it where they have painted and upgraded the exterior. have witnessed it, where they have painted and upgraded the exterior, and the intent is that they're trying to find, I think the owner's gonna occupy some portion of the space, as well as they're trying to find a tenant. So it does work, and I know that Davy was working with the property owner, the new owner, to meet all the requirements of the ordinance register, so.
I have two questions. Code enforcement. I know that I saw a list of how many active cases we have, but I'm just wondering, there are some places on Main Street that are quite a nuisance in terms of growing grass. Right underneath the arch, Safeway, it's quite an eyesore. You've got grass that's, in some spots, three feet tall. Shouldn't be happening. It's an embarrassment when you come into town and see it. Hopefully can make sure code enforcement is on that. That should have been taken care of quickly, I would have hoped.
Courtesy letters have gone out already. They went out a little bit earlier this year than typical. And unfortunately, it's, a lot of times, it's just rewriting the same letters and the same properties throughout the year. So hopefully they'll be abated soon, based on the courtesy reminder. But if not, then we take it for the code enforcement.
And the old country's...
We work with the fire department to identify and send those letters out.
The old country skeletons become quite an eyesore as well.
I don't have the list in front of me.
They've got, they've got overgrown grass, and they've got abandoned grocery carts and such in front of there. And I've been receiving complaints about both of those locations. So if you could make sure. I did call fire department earlier this week to verify whether or not one particular place was on the list, and it wasn't. So, yeah.
I asked about what the status of the Van Hotel remediation.
Yeah, I did forget. Thank you, Matt. So the status on the Van Hotel is that fire department code enforcement is already completed inspection a couple of months ago, identified a number of improvements and issues with that building that relate to public safety. Letter was provided to the owner, letting them know they had two months in order to rectify the situation, or certainly make a solid, good faith effort. That has not happened to date, and so we are now proceeding with legal options to...
That's moving on one hand. Correct. That day was earlier this week.
The gray spirit was yesterday.
Yeah.
And then one last question that I got from the community is, in our proposed zoning change ordinance, is there a proposed zoning change for the block where the library, museum, parks, or the Frontier Days facilities are? Is there any proposed zoning change there? Because I attended those meetings, and I didn't recall seeing any zoning change there. Okay, because there is a, there...
You said, library...
There are members of a group that have put out there that the city intends to change zoning in there, and I have stated that, to the best of my knowledge, there is no zoning change there.
I would say that I'm a good source of knowledge to ask this question, and...
That's why I'm asking you in a public setting to put the rumor to rest.
And I'm happy to sit down one-on-one. I will come down there.
I just want to publicly state it so that there's, they can go back and look at the record.
And again, if we're in a position to propose matters to council, and getting proposed, anyone that may be affected by that, we're sending another round of letters that have some draft letters that came in early this week that I'll be reviewing. We'll have another round go out. So we are providing specific notification.
Yes.
To those property owners that are affected.
And that's what I...
Those owners would like to have their property rezoned, there's also still the ability to make that request. But the specific properties you've mentioned, the rodeo grounds, the, you know, the...
That's precisely what I explained to the individuals, is that there's been public meetings, general notice went out, then if your property was in any way impacted, you received a second, a second direct notice was noted, they were given, and then nothing's been decided even yet, if they have a concern. Come to council or planning department. Yeah.
And by the way, I'm not on social media, I don't follow Facebook, I'm not...
This wasn't a Facebook, this wasn't a Facebook card, don't worry.
People are trying to...
No, no, this is community members face-to-face.
Office hours.
So, okay. Thank you. All right, finance?
Nothing for me to add.
Nothing about the audits?
Well, the audits are still going along. I finished the audit that, for the 2021 point two, so we'll be sending that over to the council pretty much first. I have a first or second.
June cross, hopefully?
Probably June.
I was gonna say, do we have any firm dates from the doodle poll about when we're going to be doing budget workshopping? Not yet. We're still waiting.
We're still waiting. I'm waiting on Larry, but for the most part, there was, the date that you put down as the potential date is the only date that Greta is available.
Okay. It was my second choice, but it sounds like if Larry agrees, then the second, that's the second one. It's a daytime session. I think it was like a nine to 10:30 on maybe a Tuesday, Tuesday morning.
Thursday.
Party.
I thought it was the Wednesday.
It was the second date on the poll. I don't have it in front of me.
All right. Well, you'll get back to us with that.
I will send you guys all a message.
Okay. All right, moving along. We've got the police department. We haven't heard from you all night. Nothing to report? All right, well, it looked pretty busy. Looking at the sheet and comparing the April 2023 to April 2024, there was quite an uptick in some of the areas, or wait, no, decrease, sorry, decrease in the number of calls and such. So I hope that that means that there's more peace. All right, moving on to services and facilities.
Give you a few updates on some of the projects we're working on. The 2023 pavement preservation project is going very smoothly. We expect to be done at the end of June or midweek July, and have that job buttoned up. We are currently out to bid on the 2024 pavement preservation project, and we will be closing bids out and announcing the amounts on July 20th. And after that gets approved, we will move forward to starting that job and starting that project. The crews have been working hard on a lot of, we have the upcoming car show. They've been doing tree trimming, beautification in town, getting ready for that. I want to add to what Brian said about the public work staff, services and facilities. They have done a tremendous job. The city has an amazing resource in these people. They don't just work for the city. They live here and are part of the community, and they take a lot of pride in what they do. So I'd like to do a shout-out that we have an amazing staff in all of our departments that contribute to the, you know, the good of the city.
We agree. Thank you. All right, anything for utilities?
Uh, no, nothing.
I just wanted a quick note. The reservoir is 100% full.
Yes, we're in very good shape. It was overflowing. We're doing well on water at the moment, right now, yes. And we're currently doing our reservoir study to look at what our flows are and things like that. We're, I think, 75% complete on that and everything, so.
That's good news.
Yes.
I know there's already a lot of talk at the state level about, we got lots of rain this year, but needing to look forward at drought years.
It goes up and down, yes.
And making sure that we're still diligent with the ways to retain that water that we're getting during those wet years.
And that's what we're looking at. There was proposals that we're looking at raising the dam height and everything through a couple of different means to retain some of that water. We're looking at possible ways of dredging and getting out some of the sediment to get some of the volume back that we've lost over the years. So we're looking at ways of improving our storage capacity.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we'll start at this, and vice versa.
Well, we, me and Larry met on May 16th for the Water Waste Water Systems Committee meeting. And after approving those large old business meeting minutes, we went into new business, which was the Cross Connection Control and Backflow Testing Program. John Graham, who's doing our testing in town, came and gave us a little mini presentation. And then we got a little more of a presentation on the water rights and proposed memo written by Andrew Ramos. And basically, I don't know, Brian, did you want to, is there anything there other than...
Uh, no, at that meeting, basically, we had split the team. Walter had to attend a county facilitated fire emergency meeting, so Scott and I were pinching. Basically, that committee follows to a pretty stern committee or agenda list with various items. They're mostly project updates and just filling in or advising the committee members of status of various efforts. Nothing outstanding, just going through the projects, and I think the biggest thing was John Graham's input and his summary of what he's finding out there and working with the various property owners.
So two projects that are gonna be coming up for, at the wastewater treatment plan are ones that have been in the works for quite a while. We'll be bringing those to the next city council, will be the wastewater treatment maintenance building. That's gonna be coming out to bid soon, in a couple of months. We'll be coming to the city council next meeting to get that approved. And we're gonna be doing the 250,000 gallon water storage tank. These have all been long-term projects that have been in planning, again, that Laco's been working on with us and everything, and now they're all coming to fruition. So this year, we're gonna have quite a few projects, and two of those are at the wastewater plant.
Okay.
So that was it.
All right. Met with finance, nothing new that hasn't already been reported. Met with HazCheck, he already went over that. And then MTA, we have our director stepping away at the end of their term, and the new appointee by the Board of Supervisors is a gentleman from Willet, Willie West, will be serving as a new director, and he'll be, he actually is getting sworn in tomorrow, and will attend his first meeting next week. And nothing more. Your turn.
You, oh, so you went over?
We went this way.
Oh, I didn't know that. I'm sorry.
Don't worry.
Our was, yeah, water, wastewater. The fellow from, thank you, Matt. The fellow from the crossover connection said that that's really becoming a big deal in the state of California, is people that have wells and have flip crossover into the backflow into their houses, and other people's houses are becoming a really big thing, and he made a big deal of that. So we're gonna have to watch that. The things that are, other matters was Little Lake Mobile Home Park, sewer service and water update, the Railroad Avenue water line upgrade, the steel pipe main water replacement, the wastewater treatment plan maintenance building, which they just mentioned, the reserve of the water model for the, for the flow system, and the steel tank, and the flushing, is the flushing over?
No, it's still on the way. They were actually flushing today, and it's on the way. We probably have another three or four weeks of it.
You have three or four weeks, you think?
I did, so I'd have to check them out and everything.
Okay. And that does it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
So the Economic Development and Financing Corporation met on May 9th, and things are going along pretty much smoothly with that. And they apparently are getting more loan applications right now, so they're, you know, upping their ability to support businesses with loans. Coming up on May 30th is a special meeting of the Solid Waste Management Authority, the Hazmobile, et cetera, hazardous waste issues at 9 o'clock on May 30th. It's a special meeting because the previous meeting didn't have enough of us present, and so this is gonna be our chance to really review how the program is going. And on June 6th will be the next Sonoma Clean Power meeting, 9:00 in the morning, and that'll probably be, I will probably attend here, so if anyone's interested in that. But there's no big items of controversy or relevance that I need to report on those.
Thank you.
I attended the finance committee meeting with the mayor last week. I'm looking forward to the transportation committee meeting tomorrow, and Measure K the following week. And then I just wanted to make a communication to the city, which is, I have heard from a couple of homeowners over in the Hale Creek subdivision, who are requesting a bench in the city park there, in the Hale Creek subdivision. So I didn't know who I was supposed to tell that to, but I'm packing a lot of communication.
For a memorial bench? We met with one individual, and we're looking at that right now.
No, the people I heard from, just a bench to sit in while they take walks or after...
They should contact my department, contact myself, my department.
Okay.
Yeah, we were working with someone who's doing the memorial bench for their father right now, too.
Okay, to go into that park?
Yes.
Well, maybe that will...
Yes, adjacent to the trail.
The, oh, no, in the little park that's in the...
Thank you.
In the housing development, not on the trail.
Little park.
Oh, okay.
Which the city maintains.
It's our park. It's a green area, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the homeowners are requesting a bench there where they can rest while they take walks around the neighborhood.
Yeah, please contact us, we'll look at that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it. All right, any good welfare? Thank you. How good?
I wanted to let the community know that they've probably noticed the work being done on the Padula Lot on the corner of Main and Commercial, and that is something that the Chamber of Commerce has undertaken, along with the property owner. They are grading and graveling that lot, which will be used as a valet parking lot during the car show this weekend. It's only $2 to park your car there, because Main Street will be full of beautiful vintage cars, and the monies will support the chamber to help offset those costs of doing the grading on that parking lot. And then the other good is a personal thing. My husband and I are celebrating 25 years of marriage tomorrow.
Oh.
Congratulations.
I don't know how that happened, because I'm still 30.
Congratulations.
We could have had a resolution with theirs.
Yeah, Memorial Day car show is on Sunday. I'm sure many people will be out. And it looks to be a beautiful weekend.
I have a welfare, it's not good. And that is that my housemate of the last 13 or 14 years, Mary Zella Child, is gonna be moving to Walnut Creek, where two of her adult children live, and she needs, you know, a little more direct support than I'm able to do as her housemate. And she's really excited about it. She's looking forward to it. It's gonna be a shock for me and her, both to, you know, to end our long, very cordial, very successful being housemates all these years.
Mary's been a great part of our community. She'll be missed. Please let her know.
Yeah, she's done a lot for this community. She worked at the museum, at the library. She worked for John Jevons for many years. She's been involved in a lot of local food issues, written a novel that was ostensibly about Willet's, but she hasn't quite finished it. Anyway, she's excited about moving to a place where they'll have more support for her and where she will be near her adult kids. And I don't know how I'm gonna be about living by myself. I haven't done it in decades.
Well, we wish you both well. All right, 9:19. Do you have something?
Go ahead. Oh, yes. Graduation is June 6th for the high school, and sobriety is that night.
I've got my youngest graduating. I'm excited.
So I figured I'd just let everybody know that I think they usually go do something that night. I'm not sure, I haven't heard, but what's gonna happen, if they're gonna be there.
So the parade is optional, and from what I've heard, there's gonna be a low turnout, but there will be a parade afterwards. And then sobriety starts at 9 o'clock. Are you gonna be there? I'll be there. So, yeah.
I have one more project that this is coming up and stuff. This just came up yesterday. We got the final set of plans from PG&E and their contractor. This is not a project that the city is gonna have to put any money towards. Basically, over 40 years ago, when the Bechtel road yard was put in, one of the parts of their condition, of their use permit, was that they provide connectivity of sidewalks from Sandy Lane down Bechtel and down East Hill. And over the 40-something years, it has never been done. So we're holding them to, they did improvements on their fencing, so we're holding them to it. They just completed the plans and submitted them. They're under review right now. If they're approved, which they look like they will be, they will start work later this summer and get that done by late fall. And what it'll do is provide sidewalk connectivity from Sandy down Bechtel, all the way down East Hill, and connect up with existing sidewalks there, and connect up with the Hale Creek Trail and hospital area. This is something that's been years in the making. One of the things that they will be doing is repaving that stretch... be doing is repaving that stretch of Bechtel, and there's going to be a road realignment to make sure the proper width sidewalks go in there, and that's something that actually had been approved by city council over 20 years ago, looking at, it's a slight road realignment, so that's going to make a big improvement to that intersection, that area, they're also redoing their driveways, that's less hazardous, they're going to move them to one central driveway, so there'll be some road improvements, and that's nothing that the city will be contributing to, PG&E is shouldering all the costs for this.
The community will be happy about that.
Yes.
It'll make it more lawful on that community.
Yes.
All right, there is a good new welfare. All right, 9:21, where are you?